I call the regular city commission meeting of Tuesday, May 9th, 2017 to order. They restand for the pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible)
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 Amy, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Foreman?
Here.
Mr. Crisak?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Scott?
Here.
Here. We're all here. First item on the agenda, public discussion items not on the agenda. I'll go guess Gail will go first.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Gail Gorden, representing the Pleasant Ridge Environmental Committee tonight, and I'm just here for a quick, brief update on what's going on and on reminding everybody that on Saturday, June 10th, at the new beautiful Gainesboro Park, we're having a native plant sale. We had one last year, and it was over here at the rec center, and it was very successful, and we're hoping to equal, if not double, what we're doing this year. It's the same day as the home and garden tour, so that's a little plug for anybody who is interested in the home and garden tour. And we're expecting to get maybe some of the other traffic from the home and garden tour. That's you, isn't it? Yeah. So, anyway, again, Saturday, June 10th, from 9:00 till 2:00 p.m. at the Gainesboro Park. It's down by the DPW building. We're still trying to figure out how to tell people to get there with a newly designed street traffic over there, but we think it'll be pretty easy. We're gonna have a lot of signed streets, signs up, and it shouldn't be very difficult to find. The same gentleman who was there last year, Brendan Nolan, will be hosting it for us. And we are up because we're expecting more traffic, he's hoping also to have some more plants and some more varieties. We just met with him last week and discussed the plants and the varieties he's gonna have, so it's gonna be very exciting. So, please come and enjoy, and that's all I have.
Yeah, question. Where specifically will it be? Pardon?
It's down by the DPW building.
Have you resale?
Pardon me? It's right by the resale shop. We're hoping that the parking there is gonna be a little bit better. We thought about having it up by the clubhouse. I know you all call it the shelter, but I'm old school, so I still call it the clubhouse. And so it's gonna be further down, not all the way to Flynnfield, but right there at the corner of the DPW building by the resale shop.
Okay. Just park at Amherst, maybe in the lot?
Yeah, park at Amherst, absolutely. Absolutely. And we're hoping for a good day. There will be tents there. And the other thing, we wanted to remind people, if you think you're gonna want to carry, because the parking's not really close by, if you think you're gonna have enough plants that you might have to carry something, maybe bring a wagon with you or something to roll those little plants away with you on, okay? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to go first?
You can speak before me.
You can go first?
No, it's all right.
We're very accommodating.
Good to see all of you, Ben Hamilton, trustee on the Pleasant Ridge Foundation. Just trying to give a last-minute update on the auction, which will be May 20th, starting at 5:00 p.m. at the community center. One important note, this is the last week to get tickets at the discounted rate of $40. You can get them online at pleasantridgefoundation.org. You can buy them at the community center. You can also buy them at City Hall. And if you put a post on Facebook, we'll also track you down and get you tickets. You can't do any of those. One other thing we're also selling this year is the raffle tickets for those people that can't make it or are feeling adventurous. We're only selling 200 tickets. They're $100 apiece. The winner hopefully will win $10,000. If we sell 200, that'll be it. If not, it'll just go to a 50-50. Last year's winner won over $6,000. So, real important, though, and I think we actually have some pictures. This year, what the foundation is raising money for is the community center park project. This is phase one. We just got these drawings today.
Hey, Ben?
Yeah?
Can you step this way a little bit? You're in front of them.
I'm sorry. I'm blocking. So this is a drawing that is kinda showing what we're raising money for this year. It's...
Do you wanna give a little more detail on this?
Sure, yeah.
Since you are more familiar with the drawing.
More familiar with it. So, this is just an overview of the community center. And the general plan is, right now, this is where the play equipment is, and this is where the swings are. So, the plan is to get rid of the tired old playground equipment, which is sort of beginning to fall apart, install a new playground here. This becomes a patio gathering space that connects into the big room at the building. And then there's a new accessible walkway that will be installed so that you can get from the parking lot around the back of the building. Of course, you still have the entrance into the space here. This becomes a larger, open, green play space, and if you are ever there for summer camp, this'll be a nice, improved, open, green space for the kids to run around in at camp. This is just another better view. This has the aerial underneath. So, this is just a view of what the new entrance coming in off that playground will look like, with the walkway setting behind the building. This is a blow-up. A couple things, there's seat walls that ring the patio, planting a new tree in the middle for shade and to provide sort of a roof for the outdoor space, a new focal tree with another seat wall here with views out into the playground and the green space. And so then, that's just a perspective view of what the new outdoor patio looks like. So, really leveraging the use of the building for events, for activities, for rentals, and building upon that, and maybe even a great new place to have the auction back here.
It's already been talked about.
Yeah.
So, once again, all the money raised this year, and I mean, it'd be great if we could raise the total amount this year, but we've committed at least two years to raise the money for this project. So, tickets are a huge thing. We need people to show up to support. Also, for anyone that's never come to the auction, it's a great place to meet your neighbors. It's one of the special things, I think, about the city. The auction has always been a fun event, and it's where I met a lot of people for the first time. So, May 20th, it's gonna be a fun time. It is rockin' the ridge, so you can wear any type of rock and roll gear you want. We encourage people to dress up with the theme. We've got, I think it's 16, live item auction, depending on the commissioners actually deciding what their item's gonna be.
It's good.
I know. Are you there? All right, good. There's a lot we've got for the silent auction. We're also doing the Wall of Wine, which, again, it's, we're hoping to have at least over 100 bottles, all over a value of $25. You pay, I think it's $20, and you get to choose a bottle that's wrapped in brown paper and get a nice bottle of wine. So, it's another fun way to raise money.
Can we still donate those bottles to them?
Yes. Karen King is the main person. If you go to our website or on our Facebook page, there's information there.
Great.
But, yeah, we're still taking donations. If you have something that you haven't donated, you'd like to donate, we still will take it. It won't get into the auction booklets, which should be delivered Friday to every house in Pleasant Ridge. But, once again, it's a great event. We're very excited about it. Last year, we raised a lot of money. We're hoping to break that mark this year. So, to do that, we need everyone's support, and again, this is what this project, this is what it's for this year. So, thank you very much for the time.
Sure.
Thanks, Ben.
For those of you who have not seen Gainesboro Park, get down there and take a look. Take a walk. It's amazing how many people are already using the park constantly.
My personal favorite is the fob system, too, now.
That's right. That's right. The fob system, too. I mean...
I know it's a lot smaller and minor than the park, but...
No, no, no. I'm sorry. I forgot the fob system. And it's amazing what the foundation has been able to do, and now it's so visible. And we thank the foundation for everything that's... And I think it's a beautiful friendship that we've got now, and I encourage everybody to come, and we will continue to keep posting and pushing.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Yeah, the blocks, the different streets have really stepped up, too. Sylvan did a beautiful gift basket.
There you go.
Yeah. And Devonshire is working on their block club gift package thing, kit, something.
Something. Well, I think Wellesley's gonna take it this year.
Is Wellesley gonna do anything?
Oh, we've got something.
We've taken on the theme. There was, I think Devonshire did the bucket of beer, the Wilbury of beer last year, and there's the Wall of Wine. In consultation with Ben, I think Wellesley is gonna take on whiskey.
Ooh.
The problem we found, though, is that as people drop off contributions, that some of them have arrived with a few nips out. Everybody on Wellesley, keep your drinking whiskey at home, and your contributing whiskey, you can bring to 50.
Keep the sale.
No, but...
Have you made a copy of the police?
Yeah. No, there's a lot of enthusiasm for the different streets to contribute, and I know Ann has really done a lot to try and stimulate that, and I think that's a really great idea and a fun addition, and it gets that street involved.
Yeah. Excellent. So, get your street involved right now. Okay. Now, please. Yay.
Well, I have to tell you, for many, many years, we've lived in Pleasant Ridge for over 50 years, and we have always supported the auction and the foundation, and I want to tell you, I'm delighted with so many new people getting involved, 'cause I'm not gonna be hanging around too much longer.
Don't say that. Don't say that.
But, anyway, I know this is on a different note, and just a few minutes...
You have to name any address on this.
No, no, it's okay. I was very, I've always been very interested in solar power, and I was wondering if the commission has been discussing it, and you have, and I would really like to be involved in knowing more about it and how, what restrictions there are, and how we're going to be using it here in our city. So, that's just it. So, keep...
Turn to our city manager. You wanna just give a little bit?
Well, we have a RFP for a solar project at the community center, for rooftop solar. Yeah. So, the city, we're just doing it. We're investing in it. It's the point now...
Well, I'd like to know more about it, the cost, and how it's going to be regulated, and if individual residents want to do it, will they also be able to do this without great restrictions?
We do allow for it, and I'd have to look at our zoning ordinance, but it is covered in our zoning ordinance. It's not a lot of restrictions on it. You have to get an electrical permit, and you have to meet all the electrical standards, but in terms of the location and the, you know, where the panels go, that's the only thing we're concerned about. You know, one of the challenges we have in Pleasant Ridge is it's a very leafy community, so not everyone is...
My backyard is not leafy. I was telling you it's not leafy. But, anyway, I'm not really thinking about it, but I wanted to know that we had some restrictions, and we have ordinances that are already in place in case anyone resident or maybe at other businesses would be interested in that, too. So, maybe I could speak to you more personally and find out more about what is being discussed and decisions that have already been made.
Sure. And I believe the state of Michigan still has rebates in place this year on solar towers, so if I do something to look into.
Well, I don't know if I can afford that.
Okay.
But I just wanted to inquire and make sure that we, as a city, are being a little bit proactive.
Yes. Thank you.
Any other? Frank? Come forth.
Frank Stutcher, 85, Amherst. I, too, have been here over 50 years, and I don't know if this is the proper place or whether it's later, ask questions later on, but I'm doing it now. It's been brought to my attention that we have no facilities in Pleasant Ridge for basketball. Is that correct?
At the moment?
At the moment.
At the moment, yes.
We have no facilities. May I ask why?
This was discussed last month a little bit at the city commission meeting, and then the recreation commission took the matter up. We had a number of incidents. We had a number of police incidents where the police had to get involved. We actually had some Pleasant Ridge kids getting, who told the police that they were assaulted, didn't want to file an official police report, but had been assaulted, they said that they had been assaulted. We had a lot of complaints about people being heckled at, who were just walking on the pathways past the courts. We had a number of cases of public urination.
A lot of complaints?
Yeah, we have four complaints that we got at City Hall, which, you know, that's a lot for the volume of complaint that we have. So, we had, we had a number of these things, and they lay her on top of each other, so...
I understand.
Given that we were having these issues, and in fact, you know, I watched kids come, I was out there one day, and a car full of kids just blew through the stop sign, right across the pathway, right past the stop sign.
By the way, I've seen the Brillar truck do that, too.
So, I went over and I told the kids, like, "Hey, did you see that stop sign?" And basically, you know, there was, I got big time. They just ignored me. They stared me down, and they walked away. So, they don't care. So, we had, we had a number of these issues. So, we took it to the recreation commission. Scott put a lock on the rim to give it timeout, put a sign up explaining the reasons why. The recreation commission considered this at their last meeting and decided to leave the rim lock on for the time being. It was our intent to take it off, see how things go, and if we needed to, to put it back on. But this is, you know, it was an issue that we didn't want to get out of hand.
All right. I understand that. As I said, I've been here for 50 years, and there is nobody that, there's house or property is closer to the basketball courts than I am. I was on the recreation commission 35 years ago, and we had same type of incidents. I'm not gonna deal with that right now, 'cause same issues. People don't change. Teenagers are like adults. We have good characteristics and bad characteristics. But if I had to weigh my life here in Pleasant Ridge and evaluate basketball, since, I can tell you, my wife told, said today, "Make sure you tell them that when I work in the yard, I feel safer," because we are in our 80s, and, you know, and there's nobody in Pleasant Ridge that works in their yard more than I do. I guarantee that. Yet, I have not, I've been offended once this year, and it was really not, but the radio was on a little bit loud. I didn't like that. And so I went over there, and I said, "Gentlemen, you're a little loud with that rip." And they said, "Yeah." Sorry. They turned it off. They didn't turn it down, they turned it off. Thanked them, went on. In the past, now I can't speak for this year, but I have not heard these other issues. I did talk to some of my neighbors about their, about this, and the only person that mentioned something, he says, "Ah, there was a radio a little loud." But I've never, no one else complained, or I specifically asked them, "Is there a problem?" Now, we face this, speeding is a problem, always has been, and I think, I'm not gonna pick on Glenn Fern, his former student of mine, played football for me. I love Glenn, and I saw the, your Facebook, and I'm sorry to lose him, but my point is, maybe Glenn, somebody has to do a little bit more patrolling down there. And now, because of the posts, you can't get through too easily, so it has to be a determined effort to get down there. I'm, I guess I'm, I, if I have a 15-year-old boy or girl in this city, what programs do we have for them?
Well, Scott's not here right now. He's really the guy to answer that question.
Here it comes.
Scott's back.
Scott?
Yes.
Question. What programs do we have for 15-year-old boys or girls in the city?
Well, we run, we run sports programs that we have.
Could be specific?
Baseball goes up to 14, 15.
Are they go to 15?
Yep.
Are they involved in Ferndale?
Yes.
That only goes to 14.
Then we have a couple of the travel teams of a bunch of kids that are in town that play baseball. And we have the swim team, and we have a kids and teens yoga classes, and we have, I'm trying to think of stuff off the top of my head here. Things, and we have a number of things during the, during summer, soccer camps, summer program goes up to 15.
Frank, I, you know, I understand your issues. I mean, but we can't afford to have a police sitting down at the park.
I understand that.
And there's a sign up that very much explains what the issues have been.
And that's what I was gonna suggest.
And it's going, and we've talked about opening it up again to see if it'll work and closing it down if it doesn't.
Is it possible to put up a sign that says, "Go loud radio"? Is it possible to put up a sign that says, "We have facilities"?
Have you seen the sign that's on the pole?
No, I haven't.
You should go, there is an actual sign on the basketball pole.
What I, what I would suggest is that this isn't on the agenda to be considered here tonight, but it will be reconsidered again by the recreation commission.
That's what I would request.
So, I would, and they will be, because, you know, I know that Scott and I want to open it back up. We want to give it another chance, to give it a couple of chances, to see if we can come to a reasonable kind of pattern or use out there.
Yeah.
So, the recreation commission will be considering this again. That'll be the time. When the recreation commission heard this at the end of April, residents came and said that they wanted it closed, that they didn't feel safe in the park. So, you know, this is something where I understand...
They didn't feel safe?
They didn't, so don't, yes, that's what they said. So, you know, don't minimize their...
No, everybody's intent 13, in fact.
But, you know, this is, this is definitely going to be a difficult issue to work through, because people are gonna have strong feelings on both sides of this. So, I don't know where it's gonna end up, but the recreation commission is gonna reconsider it.
Okay. All I can tell you is, living here 50 years, I can tell you that that's been an issue 20, 30 times, and it's always been resolved. Now, the one problem you're gonna have is you only have one basket, and that, we've always had two. And what happens is, if a kid wants to come play and they got a game going, they don't always let you in, you know, especially if you're not really a good basketball player or something like this, or you're very good. But with two baskets, there's always something else. Now, we don't have that. Anyway, I just was concerned, and I would like you to reconsider opening it. As I said, I'm not offended. I have, they used to drink out of my hose because we didn't have water over there anymore. They borrowed our yard room to clean up. I've been very happy with them. It's not that I am gonna go over there and play myself, it's not that I have children or grandchildren that can go play, but I do think that we are a very inclusive community, and we should stay open to all ideas. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mayor?
Yes.
I know we'll be discussing this later, I think, in Commissioner Crisak's report, but I just had a quick question for Jim while we're on the topic. So, the recreation will meet to discuss this again, probably at their next meeting. So, it'll remain closed until that time? Is that what we're saying?
Yeah, that's what they voted to do.
And when is their next meeting?
Their next regular meeting is in July, but we're gonna have one before that.
Okay.
Probably end of May or maybe middle of June.
All right. Thank you.
Any other issues to bring forth? Okay. Next item is governmental reports. I see one governmental reporter right now. Chief.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Mr. Stutcher touched on the point that I was gonna make, so I'll go to that. You noted at the last meeting that we had discussed, that we brought to you, that we were having issues, and we were gonna place a lock on it, which was done. Then the rec commission met shortly after that. Myself and Sergeant Reed attended that meeting, anticipating questions from either the commission or the residents that would show up. There were residents there as well as all the commission members. You were out of that one, so I won't say all of them. I won't say all the, all the ones. My son had a concert, so I had to split. Do I attend my son's concert? I go to a very important recreation meeting... Absolutely. ...as liaison. So, and I knew you weren't gonna be there, that's why we... I was not there. So, we attended that, and Assistant City Manager, Rec Director, Scott Petersak, put a lot of time and effort into the presentation that he made detailing all the problems over decades. The rec commission heard that, and they discussed it, there were questions asked, residents asked questions, and even after, there was a youth there, I won't name who he is, he's a Boy Scout, lives in town, that goes to that place and plays basketball. But he himself had witnessed some of the problems that were there, and after speaking, he voted himself, I give him a lot of credit for getting up and speaking in front of a bunch of adults, and I commended him afterward, but he himself voted, "I'd rather see it closed to avoid problems." So, that's coming from one of the youths that lives in town. So, after hearing all that, the rec commission unanimously voted to keep it closed until further notice. And I, what I was gonna report today, too, is that since it's been, the basketball net has been closed, there haven't been any reported issues with music, or littering, or loitering, or marijuana smoking, and we haven't issued any more violations there. We haven't had any complaints. It's only been a few weeks.
Have you issued violations?
Yes. Yes. For loud music and for marijuana smoking, and like the city manager said, many numerous incidents that didn't go reported to the police, but they received phone calls at City Hall, you know, that filtered us. So, we stepped up patrols, and I don't know if you saw the last meeting, Mr. Stutcher, but I had a family that were going to the park from Ferndale because they liked switching up, and they saw the new park, and they went there, and they felt intimidated by the extra police presence. So, that's not a feeling we want, either. Because of the stepped-up patrols. So, I know you had mentioned maybe stepped-up patrol, but then, that's what happened. So, at the next meeting, they'll discuss it some more, and we'll see, we'll continue to monitor it, and, but right now, no new incidents. And like everybody says, we'd love to see it open, you know? It's there for use, but we don't wanna have, you know, an incident where another resident, youth gets beat up or threatened or something worse. Now, you never know in today's day and age what could happen. So, that's why it was unanimously voted to stay closed.
Maybe I'll pay a little bit more attention, too.
And you do a good job of that, 'cause you call a lot, and we appreciate it.
I haven't called you in five years.
Well, I've been here for 10, so...
I might be shortchanging that, too.
Time flies.
So, just one other thing. We continue to have the same suspect...
Sir, I'm sorry. I did, my wife could not get out of the driveway, you came over and shoveled there's snow, and I wanna thank you for that.
I didn't need to mention that. Yes. I did come and shovel, so you could get out.
Okay, well...
So, you're welcome.
Checkmate.
Not necessarily so he could get to this particular meeting. No, no. His wife had to get to somewhere, and the snowplow had come through, and it iced up, and so...
I had to pull hamstring.
And so...
Thank you, sir.
'Cause that's what you expect of us.
That's right.
So, we continue to have the same suspect on the west end of town, mostly Maple, Field, Oakdale, going through cars. We haven't had any cars, but we've captured him on residential security cameras and videos. So, if you see anything suspicious over there, call us. You know, we stepped up patrols, all the residents know, but you know, you're like, "Ah, it kinda looks suspicious, should I call, shouldn't I call?" Always call, and we'll go and check it out. We'd like to identify this person, his picture's out there, and so far, he's only taken change or anything else, but you know, people get desperate, and he might step up and do something more, and get in the old house, or something like that. I think that-
You have a picture?
We have, we have him on a video, and we put out a picture. I thought Sergeant Reed might have put it out. If he didn't, then I'll make sure that it gets out there.
Okay.
I can give you a description, it's a heavyset blackmail, a bigger hair, worn in an Afro style, puffy jacket, but it's warming up, so that might disappear. He looks to be in his twenties, that's all we have so far. It's kind of, it was in the dark, and things like that, but that's all so far.
Unlocked vehicles.
On several videos we have him, and mostly unlocked. And, yeah, again, unlocked vehicles only, so lock your doors. And lastly, if you didn't get Ben's message about the foundation, buy tickets, 'cause not only do they support projects like that, they've been huge supporters of the Police Department over the years, we wanna thank them, without them, we wouldn't have got new computers in our cars, which just got upgraded again by the software, so it's even better. So, thank you, so if you're thinking about, eh, should I buy or not, please do, 'cause it helps us, too. So, thank you much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't see any other, no other governmental reports? Oh, what a shame. Next, City Commission Liaison Reports. First is Commissioner Krzyzewski with the Recreation Commission.
I think we've pretty much covered it.
That's it, huh?
That's it.
You don't have any programs for fifteen-year-olds?
Off the top of my head?
Tennis.
Tennis, yes.
Tennis.
It's a great sport for kids, for young adults. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Next item, Commissioner Foreman for Nell Public Schools.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, short report tonight, because there has not been a school board meeting since our last City Commission meeting. The next one will be May fifteenth, 7:00 PM at the high school. So, the one item I will cover is an update on the Ferndale superintendent search that's been ongoing. There's a timeline that's been published, and I'll just go through a few important dates on that. May fifteenth, again, there's the next school board meeting that day, but that's also the date of the application deadline, if you wanna apply for superintendent, anyone that's here, or anyone else that's qualified anywhere else. May twenty-second, 6:00 PM, would be the board workshop, where they're gonna prepare for their interviews. May thirtieth and thirty-first, 6:00 PM, in the media center at the high school, would be the initial interviews, if anyone would like to be there for that. Let's see, June first through the third, the board will host final candidates on tours of the schools, culminating with a visit to the June Fair, which takes place at Roosevelt, or I should say, Lower Elementary. Final interviews will take place on Saturday, June third. June sixth through ninth, the board will visit the final candidates' district, to kinda see how things are handled there. And June twelfth, 6:00 PM, in the Ferndale High School Media Center, the board will meet to select our next superintendent. So, if you'd like to be there for that, you know when that is, too. So, that's the end of my report.
Great. Thank you. A quick question, when was the June Fair?
I don't have an exact date of that, I think it must be that-
It was one of the things.
Yeah, I think it'll be June third, Saturday, but I'll confirm.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Sorry.
Sorry. Thanks, thanks.
I should've put that in my report.
Yeah. Next is Commissioner Perry, Planning DDA.
Thank you, Mayor. So, the Planning Commission and DDA met on Monday, April twenty-fourth, and they had, the DDA discussed their budget, and voted to approve their budget for the next year, looking forward at how, you know, the alleys will be paid off soon, their investments in that, and they'll be able to do more investment in, you know, streetscaping along Woodward and everything. We also had another facade improvement grant application from the funeral home, Wilkes-
Wessels.
Wessels and Wilkes, thank you. And then, also, they discussed a DDA planter program, which, having planters along Woodward Avenue, to help with the beautification, and, you know, being very, recognizing that there are different styles of buildings, and so, you know, figuring out a common thread, yet still making sure that they can fit with the styles of the different businesses and buildings. And the next meeting is going to be, oh, I had written it down, it's like, it's coming up, and I will let you know when that is. I think it's in July.
Before the end of tonight?
Sure, I'll look it up by then, but thank you, it was a great meeting.
Good. Next, Commissioner Scott, Historical Commission.
Quick mention, and a shout-out to everyone of the Historical Commission, for our Home and Garden Tour on June tenth. If you haven't already gone online, you can buy tickets in advance on the cityofpleasantridge.org website, for fifteen dollars, and they're twenty dollars on the day of. So, just hop into City Hall, or go online to buy the tickets. We have seven homes on the tour this year, and all the photographs and everything about the homes looks great, so it'll be a fun afternoon and day for everyone. So, if you have an opportunity, and the day is free for you, set it aside for the Home and Garden Tour, and I'll also mention, again, that the Environmental Committee is holding their plant sale on the same day. So, it will start right here, at the police station, stop by, pick up your wristband for the tour, that gets you into all the homes and the gardens, and looking forward to seeing everybody on that day. That's all.
And while this didn't fit into anybody's report, I believe Saturday is the Citywide Garage Sale.
Oh, that's right.
So, if you haven't gotten your, put in your money and gotten your sign, please do so. No garage sales on Thursday or Friday, you'll have to do it on Saturday, just, I know.
And Ridge Resale.
And Ridge Resale. So, yes, Ridge Resale and Citywide Garage Sale on Saturday, the thirteenth. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry, can I just circle back to the Recreation area?
You could.
And if I could ask Scott to come up here for a quick question? Thank you, Scott.
Sure.
I have a member of my household that is extremely interested in that sand volleyball league.
Mm-hmm.
Just a question on that, will that be rehapped before the league starts? New sand and new net and such?
Yeah, this, we had new sand put in last year, so we do, we'll have it groomed, and the new net is, been put on order, and we have new, like, out-of-bounds ropes also, so it will be ready to go for the league, so call up to the community center and sign up your teams.
And is it a minimum, three teams are needed?
Uh, yeah, well, look, three teams are needed, we hope for more, but that would be, you know, the bare minimum, where two teams would play, and a team would be off.
Would you mind plugging in a little bit more, like-
Sure.
What type of makeup has to have, how many men and how many women?
You wanna just tell us, come on.
Sure.
Why did you even ask him up here?
Like, typical for a co-ed volleyball-type rules, it's, you know, fifty percent male, fifty percent female, you can, you can never have more males on the court than females, so if you can have, if you have five people out there, you know, four of them can be females, and one can be a male, or three females and two males, you can never have the opposite. And I think the adults are gonna be Tuesday nights, and we're trying to see if we can get a teens league set up for Wednesday night. So, it's two hundred dollars per team, you get t-shirts, seven games, and good times for all.
Thank you very much.
Okay. I'm glad I recognized my limitations, and I've forgotten everything you said, I have no idea. And I promised not to ask again. Okay. Next item is the Consent Agenda. And usually, we just kind of rush through it, I just wanted to mention a few things, we have several resolutions, and just to identify them, the resolution recognizing May as Mental Health Month, I'm not going to read the resolutions, but just to acknowledge them. Resolution recognizing Saturday, May thirteenth, in addition to the garage sale, we'll also have National Association of Letter Carriers Food Drive Day, so don't try to sell food in a garage sale, give it to the letter carrier. Proclamation declaring Monday, May fifteenth, as Police Memorial Day, and May fourteenth to twentieth, two thousand seventeen, as Police Week. Resolution recognizing Wednesday, May twenty-fourth, two thousand seventeen, as Volunteers Recognition Day in the city of Pleasant Ridge. And finally, I do want to read this, even though he is too humble and too shy to show up for his own retirement. As I posted on Facebook, Glenn Fern is retiring on May thirtieth, after twenty-three years of Pleasant Ridge. So, I just wanted to quickly read this resolution. In honor and recognition of twenty-three years of dedicated service, Officer Glenn Fern. Whereas Glenn W. Fern has been a dedicated employee of the Police Department of the city of Pleasant Ridge for twenty-three years, hired in nineteen ninety-four as a patrol officer, and it was great, the chief that hired him actually came in on Facebook and told him how-
Vanquished.
...was his best hire ever, that he was so pleased, and they were gonna get together when he came back to town. Whereas Officer Fern has tendered his Notice of Retirement effective May thirtieth, two thousand seventeen, and whereas his years of service has served this community well, marked by exemplary dedication to justice and right, he was a conscientious, trustworthy, and loyal employee. And whereas when the city hired this young man in nineteen ninety-four, this young man in nineteen ninety-four, he demonstrated a clear understanding of what it meant to be a law enforcement officer in a small community like Pleasant Ridge. And whereas his performance of the duties and responsibilities of a police officer has been characterized by excellent and constructive contributions to the Police Department, and whereas Officer Fern has worked closely with many city-elected officials, city administration, too many employees to count, and many residents in our beautiful city earning their respect and friendship, and whereas he was a true goodwill ambassador for Pleasant Ridge, and would never hesitate to tell anyone how proud he was to be part of the Pleasant Ridge Police Department, and whereas his determination and tenacity for justice, his dedicated interest and devotion to right, and his willingness to go above and beyond the call of duty is deserving of recognition. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Kurt Metzger, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the city of Pleasant Ridge, and on behalf of the members of the City Commission, deem it an honor and privilege to recognize Officer Fern for his outstanding service, and be it further resolved that sincere appreciation of the city administration and all residents of Pleasant Ridge is hereby extended to Officer Fern, with wishes for a healthy retirement and continued success in all his future endeavors. And we thank Officer Fern for everything he's done, and I hope he still stops and talks when, for the next few weeks, anyway, when he's out on the road. So, just- Really great guy. Thank you. Thank you for letting me do that. So, now, can I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
Mayor, I move that the Consent Agenda be approved.
Is there support?
A second.
Any discussion? Here, we have a vote, please.
Commissioner Krzyzewski?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes, motion carries. Great. Next item is Fifty-Six Ridge Road, request for ordinance modification to allow a front yard fence. Jim?
Yes. In your packet is a letter from the homeowner at Fifty-Six Ridge, Rob and Judy Walkler, the letters from Judy Walkler, and the request is to put in a decorative white picket fence along the property frontage at the sidewalk on Ridge Road. As you drive up and down Ridge Road, you probably have noticed over the years that there are some properties that have fences, many do not, some have hedges. And the reason for this is that, at some point in the past, fences were obviously allowed on Ridge Road, and then they were disallowed. The ordinance does not allow any fences to be in front yards currently, and that's a blanket provision that applies to the entire city. In fact, Ridge Road is probably the only road in town that has front yard fences that exist on it. The ordinance also gives the City Commission the ability to grant variances and modifications to the front fence provisions in specific cases, in the Citation for that, Section fourteen, one-twenty-one of the Code of Ordinances. So, the request before the City Commission to consider is whether or not you want to basically allow a variance or modification, in this case, to allow a fence along the front yard at Fifty-Six Ridge. I have a few sort of visual tour along Ridge we could take real quick. This is the picture that the property owner provided, illustrating what it is that they want to do. This is the house that they want to do it at, this is directly across from the Lower Elementary, or Roosevelt School, it's the last house in Pleasant Ridge, so Ferndale is to your left, and you can see the, just the end of the fence that guards the crosswalk, and they just added this new, nice brick walkway extending up to their front yard. So, now they would also like to add the white picket fence extending along their frontage to complement that. So, what other houses have these? We've got the split rail fence, that's a couple houses to the north of them, that exists at Fifty Ridge, Forty-One Ridge, on the east side of the street, has a wrought iron fence, that's clearly been there for some time. Thirty-Eight Ridge has a picket fence in the side yard, lining their side yard out to the street, and then, obviously, a lot of nice landscaping along the frontage. Thirty-Two on Park, it actually fronts on Park, this is a, something in the ordinance where you can have a backyard fence that goes to the side property line, so they have a fence in their backyard that actually goes out along Ridge, on the east side of the street. Twenty-Five Poplar Park has a similar situation, where they have a low stone wall that was built at some unknown point in the past, that extends along their entire side yard along Ridge, along with some pretty dense landscaping. Sixteen Ridge has a combination brick pier and wrought iron fence, and so those are the properties that have fences along Ridge. The alternative, and since the fences have been prohibited along Ridge since probably nineteen seventy-nine or earlier, is to put in a hedge, and that's what people have done since then. So, accomplishes the same thing that a fence does, it provides that privacy barrier. So, we've got a number of hedges and landscaping in various states of formality or wildness, and this is actually at Fourteen Ridge, that the homeowners put in, one thing to be aware of is that in two thousand and seven, the homeowners did request a variance, at that time it was sent to the Zoning Board of Appeals, which is also the City Commission, but the Zoning Board of Appeals in two thousand and seven turned that fence down. So, they wanted to put in an aluminum fence along there. All of the older fences that exist are wood picket fences, or actual wrought iron fences with brick piers, so, you know, that may be some distinction that the Commission wants to consider, but this is some history of this question that has occurred in the past. So, one of the things that I suggest that you consider as you weigh this, is that there is precedent for this type of activity for fences along Ridge Road. There are some things that separate or, you know, distinguish Ridge Road from other parts of town, they are the largest lots in town, they are estate-type lots, the houses have the largest front yard setbacks, at least on the west side of the street, but they have very, very large front yard setbacks, so the houses do not have the same relationship with the street that most of our, that all of our other streets do. And that's one of the reasons to not have front yard fences, is when you have houses that are closer to the street, it creates a different environment along the street, where the front doors really relate to the sidewalk. We don't have that along Ridge Road, because they're so far back, you can't realistically talk to somebody who's standing on the front porch on Ridge. And Ridge is our busiest non-Woodward street in town, so as you can see, people over the years have done many things to buffer their houses from the higher traffic counts that we have on Ridge. So, those are some reasons why you may want to consider fences along Ridge Road. The alternative, of course, is to continue prohibiting fences and remain with the hedge option that residents can put in, but it's really up to the Commission for what you want to do. There are a few different ways we can address this, and I noted these in the Agenda summary, you have motions before you to do these different options. You could approve this request for a variance, and you could put any kind of stipulations you want on that, that it can only be a, you know, true, actual wood fence, because that's keeping in the existing pattern that's out along Ridge. You could approve the request with any stipulations you wanna place on that, and you could also direct staff to prepare an ordinance amendment to allow this going forward. And it's certainly within our right to reconsider our ordinance on this, and this would address the fact that we did turn the variance down in two thousand and seven, this would basically then say, okay, this is what we're gonna do on Ridge now. So, we would prepare the ordinance amendment and bring that back to you for your consideration, that would set the ground rules for how and when and where, and what they look like, and what they are. You could deny the request, and simply uphold the ordinance ban on fences in front yards, or you could deny the request at this time, but direct staff to prepare the ordinance amendment that would permit front yard fences in certain instances, and then, once that ordinance is passed, the property owners could basically put their fence up in accordance with that new ordinance. Or you could postpone action until a later date, or provide other direction to staff on this item. So, with that, I would turn it over to the Commission for any questions or discussion you have, and I'd be happy to contribute right now.
Mayor, what questions? First off, what is the material that's proposed, that this new fence would be made of?
The letter describes it as a small white picket fence with a gate, so I don't know that the specific material is described. I know you can do tracts, tracts, or other kind of plastic, that's why I say, if you wanted to stipulate that it has to be real wood, you could.
I guess my most important question is, if we were to suggest that we would like to alter the ordinance to allow this in certain conditions, what would the timeline for that turnaround be for the changes, would you think? And then, what method would you suggest to come up with what types of fences would be permitted?
What I would do in this situation, so first, the turnaround, it could be quick, we could have an ordinance for you to introduce for public hearing next month, because it's not a complex ordinance to write. For what I would do, if I was putting standards together, basically, I would just go out and use the existing fences that are there as precedents, because, you know, they're all pretty reasonable, they're all fairly uniform in their height, there's really two materials, wrought iron, brick pier, three materials, brick piers, wrought iron, and wood picket, and I would say that that would be what we would continue with. I wouldn't allow, I would not suggest that we allow aluminum fences-
PVC?
-or PVC, or plastic. I would say we stick with the kind of historic, you know, character, if you wanna do this. And actually, you threw the chair, if you don't mind.
I've never been here, I'm not sure how to do this.
Yes.
Okay. I'm Judy Walkler.
Hi.
Hi. And yes, it is wood that we would like to use, and I brought a picture of the inspiration, if you would like to pass it down. The picture that was shown of there was just, it's the general idea, but not necessarily exactly those kind of pickets, it's just, Jim asked me for a picture, yeah, that's somewhat like our house.
Yeah.
So, we got the porch in, we got the walk-in, the fence is the last, well, not the last step, we're never done with that house, but-
So, my last question is, if we did take that route, do we have to deny the request now, or can we just say, let's hold off on the request until this is ready, and then just-
Well, like I said, you could approve the request with certain stipulations. I would suggest, if you wanted to, that it be a wood picket fence, not more than four feet in height, because that's pretty much what exists out there, and those would be And those would be what I would bring forward as standards that we would put in the ordinance. Or you could just wait till any ordinance is placed. That's right. You have the choice. You can handle it however you want to.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, to Jim, is there a photo of the original fence?
No, we couldn't find a photo of the original fence. We looked back. All the photos we had were of the house, not of the frontage. So we weren't able to dig.
I could find one for you, but it would take me a while. I'd have to dig through the basement.
Just curious.
And it was a four-foot wood picket fence, white.
Okay, it was four feet tall.
Yeah.
Yeah. And the reason it's not there...
We appreciate you coming forward.
And the reason it's not there anymore is that, over the years, it had just rotted. When we moved there, the kids from Roosevelt, at that time, would just go by and just play, you know, songs on the fence with a stick and things. And then, whenever one would be loose in the ground, it would fall. And I spent about five years, you know, replacing those pickets. One, every time they'd fall down. Pretty soon, it was just all rotted out, all the posts. But it was exactly like that picture.
Got it. Thank you.
Mayor, I would only ask if you have anything else you would want to contribute to the conversation about intentions or...
Well, it's just, I mean, I think I said it all in the letter, but it's just about the historical nature of, you know, the neighborhood. But then, it's also a vision that we had, you know, to restore. You know, we used to have all of that land. I don't know if you remember, but it was, apparently, our house was an orchard. Yeah. And there was quite a bit of land. And now, we don't own those adjacent lots in Ferndale anymore. But we wanted to try to recreate, basically, the feeling that the house had when we bought it in '90. I think we bought it in '90. That's the land.
Cool. Thank you.
The money pit.
Jim, just to reiterate, as far as approving with certain stipulations and then asking for the ordinance, it's really not much different than, rather than asking for an ordinance and then coming back.
Right. I mean, if you're fairly confident you're going to approve an ordinance amendment to allow these in the future, the question is, do you want to wait for...
Right, that would be, my preference would be not to wait. But knowing full well that we would have an ordinance coming forward. And Jim?
So, Mayor, with, like, what is the ordinance that you're proposing? My concern is, and I, you know, and Jim addressed this, actually, in the thing as well, is setting a precedent for, like, lots of fences. Because I don't, I don't love the fences along Ridge Road because it's like, it feels more cage-like. But I know that that's also probably a personal preference versus a, you know, the points were very good that it's like, this is more of like, an estate-type feel and the houses are a little bit further back. My personal feeling is, is it pushes them even further back. But, you know, visually. But, you know, and I can appreciate the historical, you know, approach to this and everything. And that this one is very non-intrusive as far as, you know, it's not a big, like, wall to the world. You know, it's still very welcoming. So my concern is more the precedent that it would set with, like, okay, so then, can people build these walls to the world, kind of thing, along there? And that, and, you know, and it sounds like we can address that somewhat.
Yeah, absolutely.
You can limit the materials and limit...
You can limit materials. And in fact, some fence ordinances, that truly are fence ordinances, not wall ordinances, require that fences have a maximum of 50% opacity. So that you can't build a wall.
Okay.
There has to be a fence that has openings through it so that you, you know, retain some of that.
Okay.
Which is also take care of stone walls or anything else that someone might want.
Right.
And then, this wouldn't be something that could bleed over to the rest of the neighborhood of starting...
Ridge Road specific.
Yeah, it would be very clear where you could, where you could even do that. And so there, I would write in, what I would suggest is if we were, what I would bring to you, thinking about the Ridge Road properties that are on the corners with the intersecting streets, prohibit the fences along the frontage of the intersecting streets. So you can't take it back down Elm Park and pan over and run to Ridge. And then, you have to get on a Ridge Road frontage. And then, you know, I guess on interior side yards. You could do it.
Do we get into any visibility issues?
We have corner clearance requirements in the ordinance already. So any kind of fences would have to meet that corner with clearance visibility standard.
Okay.
And probably some distance to house would automatically eliminate a lot of houses from being able to get a fence.
You mean, non-Ridge Road houses?
Are all the houses on Ridge the same distance from the road?
No, east side Ridge is very different from west.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not really we need that, but we can look at it if we need to.
I guess I would only say I'm in agreement with Commissioner Perry as far as the concern about encouraging the walling-in effect. Because I think that's something that, overall in the city, it's something that we all enjoy, is, you know, that lack of fences, especially in the front yard, frontage especially. I do recognize that Ridge Road is a separate issue. What I would be, I would, I'm very comfortable seeing a fence at 56 Ridge. What I would be comfortable with is incorporating an opportunity for other residents to participate in the conversation as part of an ordinance amendment process. So setting up the instructions to provide for the amendment. And then, with the understanding that if the amendment was approved, that 56 would then be able to build as they wish. That, in my mind, kind of creates the law of the land, the lay of the land, the parameters, before granting the exception.
Well, I would say this has to fit within certain, you know, parameters already that are more of like, ordinance and city things that have like, a knowledge base type thing. So I don't know that it's as much of something for residents to just sort of roundtable it because it's a, it's, there are sort of specific criteria and needs that, you know, the, you know, the professionals are sort of going to know more. And I think that's where, I think that's where the issue sort of comes in. It's like, we want to make sure we have some parameters so it doesn't become like, but I really want this, you know? And six people really want, you know, a front yard privacy fence. It's, so, because that's sort of, yeah, why we're here.
Yeah.
I think, and I think the level of impact, the fact that you already got, you already have fences that exist out there. We're not creating a new pattern. We're really responding to a pattern that already exists. So to me, that kind of puts us at a lower level of sort of scrutiny for whether or not we want to allow more of that. If we're saying, okay, well, we're going to allow front yard fences everywhere in the city, oh, you know, that's a totally different discussion that sends a lot of alarm bells off in my head. But, you know, we're just extending a pattern that already exists along Ridge Road. And the average person walking down the street probably looks and goes, oh, fences are allowed here. Because we've already got a number of them. But, you know, that's just kind of my thought where we dial in the...
But it is the setback in the design of Ridge Road. You never, or at least, I've never had the sense that they're walling themselves, you know, that they're closing themselves in because it's usually, your sightline is usually of the house. You hardly even look at whatever, whether it's hedges or a fence or anything else. That seems to be, it kind of finishes off the look, but it really doesn't affect the view or the sense that you get when you look at the houses. So I, you know, I think with what we have in some of the ordinance, we can specify for Ridge and materials.
And remember, it'll visually narrow the street, which is a traffic call.
There you go. That's what we're all...
Which is a traffic calling, technically.
I like that. But they're going to change it to a wall.
And they ask?
So we don't even have to net.
And they ask? Is the fence that you want four feet high? Or is it shorter? Does the picture look a little shorter?
Yeah, it's just a picture. I found this, the idea. But we can easily stay within four feet.
Okay.
The pickets, there's pickets that are pre-made.
Yeah.
Three to four, yeah.
Okay.
Typically, three to four is the...
Yeah.
So I do have a question for you. Would we be allowed to put up a hedge? If the Commission decided no to the fence, then we could do a hedge?
Yes.
Because I've already been thinking, you know, okay, if they disapprove it, then... But to my mind, the hedge would be much more of a block because the fence is, speaking of opacity, you know, it's quite open. And, you know, I think it, I think it's inviting. That's my personal judgment.
That is less, that is less open to me than...
If you actually go down Ridge and take a close look, there are some houses that you don't even know that they're there because there's a complete block of landscaping.
So there's no height restriction on hedges?
Not on landscaping, no. Like, so that's the alternative that we use now because fences aren't permitted.
No, because we don't want a walling. That's not...
Close yourself off.
Mr. Mayor, with regard to public involvement or public interaction, I would just suggest that if this is on the agenda next month, you know, that's the opportunity for any comments to come in or before then.
And next month would be the call for public hearing. So it would be discussed at three meetings at that point. You know, this one, next month, and then the month after for the actual consideration. If we hear an approval, well...
Public hearing for an ordinance.
Right.
So you're suggesting we wait?
Oh, no, I was just commenting on public interaction.
Oh, okay. Well, yeah, right. We're going to have a public hearing.
I think we would have public involvement in that, in that process. And we should go without it.
There wouldn't be a public hearing if we gave, if we made a variance.
Pardon?
There wouldn't be a need for public hearing if we made a variance?
No, no, the variance is just to allow this specific fence to be permitted. The public hearing will be for the ordinance to standardize the...
Well, we have five options on the table here.
And the first one, we can rewrite.
There you go. The first one, we can rewrite. Does anybody want to make a motion?
I think I have one that would suit.
Oh, good, you got one.
No, please.
You got some.
The one suggested in option two. So I'll have to work on the wording here as I go. But, "So, Your Honor, I move the request for the variance to Section 14-117 of Pleasant Ridge City Code by Robyn Judy Walkler to construct a front yard fence at the property commonly noticed 56 Ridge Road. Be approved in accordance with Pleasant Ridge City Code, Section 14-21, with following conditions, meaning it's a wooden picket fence with no height greater than four feet." Does that kind of make sense so far? Further, the City Commission directs City Administration to prepare an ordinance amendment to City Code Chapter 14, Buildings and Building Regulations, Article 5, Fences." I think that's what we're...
If I may add, equal to or greater than 50% opacity.
Is it in the ordinance?
There's that that's already inserted in the ordinance.
That is not, that would be a good one. And the other one I would suggest is, the fences that exist, you want a setback from the sidewalk.
Oh, yes.
Okay. So I would suggest that it be at least a foot or 18 inches off the sidewalk.
Off the sidewalk.
That provides you room for pedals, for bikes, for people passing each other.
In terms of the variance that we're...
Keeps those kids away with the sticks.
Yes.
Yes.
The stick, they gotta get a longer stick.
A longer stick.
Say, "Will."
So I'm okay with those additions.
And so you had the specific materials in there?
Four foot, up to four foot in height, wooden picket fence. Jim, you mentioned no less than 18 inches from sidewalk.
How would you suggest no less than a foot?
A foot from sidewalk.
How are the trees from the sidewalk that we put in?
In the berm?
Yeah.
Depends on how wide the berm area is. We typically put it in the middle of the berm. The nearest berm, we have about five feet.
I'm just thinking about sidewalk replacement later.
Yeah.
Okay.
But to clarify, then the ordinance will go further and talk about other materials other than four foot with the fences.
So this is a variance just for the specific event? So this is a variance just for the specific event and then...
I don't think we got to the second half of his motion yet.
Okay.
No, I did. Direct staff to prepare the ordinance.
I thought so, yeah.
I missed that.
No, I said a lot.
Keep in mind.
Is, I like that. Is there support?
Support, second.
Is there any further discussion? Great, let's vote on this.
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Kryziak?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Motion approved. Thank you. You're good.
Fence, it do require building permits, so...
All right, that's right. And you can't hide that. Congratulations, we'll look forward to the fence.
Thank you.
2018 Palmer Garden Tour.
We've already been asked.
Not until the fence.
That wasn't part of that motion, but there will be something to that effect. All right. The net, great. The next item on the agenda is consideration of the anti-corruption resolution. Jim, you wanna...
Sure, I'll just introduce this and then I'm going to turn it over. This is a resident request who asked that this item be placed on the agenda. Ran it by the mayor and we've included the request as an agenda item for your consideration and direction. But the, there's a resolution that was provided by Alex Lenko, who's a resident of the city, for the commission's consideration. It's a sample and it's in draft form, so if the commission's interested in going forward with it, we can tweak it and finalize it. But with that, I think I would turn it over to Alex to kind of describe...
Yeah, absolutely.
Who he's working with on this and what it's about.
Good evening, everybody. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Alex Lenko, 61 Wellesley. Yeah, and as Jim pointed out, the draft resolution is just that, it's a draft. I'm, I guess, representing a group called Represent Us, I have a support group with me as well. Kind of, the concept is, the philosophy is that corruption is a scourge on government and basically we're working at a grassroots level to build groundswell momentum to bring change at a local, state, and national level. Represent Us is a nonpartisan, nonprofit organization and, I mean, it's really one of those topics that affects everybody all over. And the, it's not specifically, you know, directed at you, we're not accusing this commission of corruption, right?
I guarantee you, we have a...
But as it goes up the chain, there's more and more opportunity for corruption and part of it is just asking the communities for support. So Southfield's already adopted similar language. And again, I mean, the language is up to you guys. We're also working on Royal Oak, but kind of the larger objective is then to get a ballot initiative going, get legislation on the state ballot, vote on it, have that implemented at the state level, and then ultimately to the national level. So that to Represent Us is kind of in a nutshell and the draft resolution is the first step in terms of as we're going out getting signatures, it gives us credibility. And again, it's just, it gives us the momentum to keep the fight going. Do you have any questions? Some haven't been answered.
So my plan to be a lobbyist after this doesn't...
Well, there are rules, but that's just part of it, is corralling, corralling what you would think would be legislated to actually being legislated. So, so things that don't pass the smell test may or may not be legislated at this point and it's trying to bring the things that don't pass the smell test into the out of bounds and things that do pass the smell test leaving them, you know, open.
No, I just wanted to say I'm very impressed with the website, searching the website, looking at the platform and certainly you can't argue against ending gerrymandering. I mean, we're talking about nonpartisan, you know, to start doing the redistricting in a nonpartisan way. Obviously, the whole election funding and opening up the books so that we know who in the heck is giving money in political...
Political activities, super PACs and...
What is closing the revolving door, getting people going back and forth from politics to... Yeah, I mean, it's, my only concern was I would like to do some rewriting of the resolution. I think it's a little, it doesn't read very well. I think there's some work, some editing that can be done. But I mean, I certainly, I, for one, certainly support the message and support the resolution as it is. I just think that some tweaking that just needs to be done and then reintroduced before we would vote on it.
Okay. You're the experts and you've got the attorney and...
I didn't even think about that. If I spend the money, we'll just, no, but I mean, I, you know, I think all of us, well, I'm not speaking for all of us, but certainly the message behind this is very important, I think. And it's a message that we can, that we've in various ways addressed, talking to Robert Whittenberg and others about these kinds of issues and certainly, for me, I'm very supportive of the whole effort and quite, quite impressed in the volunteer nature of the organization. I think that's great that everybody is stepping forward and putting yourselves out for this. I think it's great.
Thank you for the support.
Thank you for bringing it forward.
Mr. Mayor, if I could ask a question of Alex. Toward the end, it mentions bar them from all lobbying activity for five years once they leave, empower all voters through $100 tax rebate to contribute to candidates they support. My question's on the $100 tax rebate part. What does that really mean?
So I wasn't part of drafting the resolution language that was kind of boilerplate from the organization, so that's what I presented. So I don't really have a good answer for that. Is there anybody in the group that has an idea as to the philosophy behind the $100 rebate?
Yeah, it's international. So, yeah, there may be something that...
That was just curious, if that means every donation up to $100 is tax deductible or do I get some sort of rebate on my taxes that would then allow me to use that money for donations?
My understanding is it's a public pool for campaign financing. So instead of relying on donors, the candidate then is relying on a public pool of money.
And then they can use that $100 however they see fit?
Correct.
I see.
So it's a national campaign finance reform approach.
Okay.
Getting money out of the election process.
Okay.
No citizens united.
Right, in opposition.
Definitely no citizens united.
And then, Mr. Mayor, the last thing I would mention is more just for us. At the very last sentence, it says, "Be it further resolved, Pleasant Ridge hereby includes in its 2017 legislative agenda support for efforts to pass its own anti-corruption legislation and respectfully urges, et cetera, et cetera." I would want to discuss what that really means before we approve that.
I agree. I agree. That's why I think there's discussion. I think the sentiment and doing something, I'm very supportive, but I do want to discuss it further and kind of, maybe some of those questions need to be, you know, we raise those questions, we edit down certain items.
Great.
Had Southfield made any changes or who else, Royal Oak?
I was not involved in the Southfield.
Okay.
Southfield.
Southfield made...
Okay. And Royal Oak is a work in progress, so we're gonna be joining the Royal Oak Commission next.
Cool, oh, good.
Yep. And then a shameless plug, we meet every, or every other Thursday and the next meeting is actually this Thursday, two days from today, at the office in Royal Oak, which is a coffee shop. So if any of you are interested in joining...
The office is a coffee shop?
Yeah, it's across from, or kitty corner to the Music Theater.
Oh.
Across from what used to be the salsa club.
The workout place.
It used to be a workout place, that's right.
Used to be a lot of things. I would love to be there, but it's 50-plus bingo night and I can't possibly...
Two nights?
Pleasant Ridge.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah. We forgot to mention that one.
Yeah.
I hope the meetings don't conflict with sand volleyball.
They're still open.
Any other...
Corruption smashers.
Likewise, I'd favor that sentiment, but want to rewrite the ordinance.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, any...
Yeah, I would just say I agree and I really am appreciative of Alex for bringing this to the commission. I know we spoke about your interest in this and it's an interest I think you'll find is well-received on the commission. I would like to give some direction though, if that's possible, to Jim as far as what timeline or any kind of, would this be something that we could have for next month's...
I'll see what...
Okay. I would, that's what I would, I would push not rather than pushing it off, let's try to get it for next month.
Yeah. And is that something that we can involve Alex in as far as crafting that?
However it helps.
You're willing to be?
Yeah.
What does that mean for you?
Well, I don't know if, do we have to make a motion or are we just kind of understanding that next steps would be consulting, getting language and identifying what actually, you know, further legislative action terms like that mean, and then bringing that back on a timeline, I think that, you know, we're all comfortable with.
Yeah, so, I mean, we can certainly start this process. I think it, we can just kind of work offline to figure out what your concerns are, shoot those over to Alex. And then, once I get that, we can draft the resolution. So I think it can be done by June, it just depends on how long it takes for the back and forth.
Right.
If it has to go into July, we'll go into July, but, you know, we won't wait.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Does that sound good?
Absolutely.
Okay, yeah, appreciate the support, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yes, thank you. Good night.
Thank you. So, Joy, and thanks to everybody for coming.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Rob.
Good night. Have a motion. I believe it would be motion number two. Anybody wanna?
Sure.
Give me a motion.
Mayor, I move that the resolution regarding anti-corruption be tabled until next month. Thank you.
With work.
With work.
With work going on in between, okay. Is there support?
Mayor, I support, if I could also add that, yeah, just that it be tabled with the understanding that staff will work to provide a resolution for the June or July meeting.
As soon as...
As...
As soon as...
Consideration.
Right.
For consideration at the next available meeting.
Okay, you got that, Amy? You want to just repeat it?
May I move that the resolution regarding anti-corruption be tabled with the instruction that staff work to provide a resolution for consideration at the next available meeting?
Second.
Right, second, right. Any more discussion? Can we have a vote, Amy?
So we're changing the maker of Kryziak?
Sure.
And we're seconding by Scott?
Yep.
Commissioner Kryziak?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Motion carries, we will move forward.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Please, appreciate it.
Thanks so much.
Thanks, you guys.
Okay. The next item, resolution authorizing the Oakland County Brownfield Authority to undertake review... Goodness. There it goes. Well, hey, you never know, right? You always wonder who these people are.
Must have been saying rocks more often.
Now, the whole left side of the room. Okay, now. See now if they've opened it up for you. Resolution authorizing the Oakland County Brownfield Authority to undertake review of the Iron Ridge Development Project. Jim?
Yes. We introduced this to you last month and went through, I guess, an introduction to the development, to the concept of a brownfield TIF, what it's for, what it accomplishes when, you know, it's reasonable to use that. I do have some slides, but I don't know that we need to, you know, this is all the same stuff we had last month in case we had questions really, so I'm not going to go through these slides in detail unless I need to refer to them. The question before you tonight is a resolution which authorizes Oakland County's Brownfield Authority to review and process the brownfield plan for Iron Ridge. Oakland County's Brownfield Authority acts when a community asks it to, because we're making the decision to defer some of our future incremental tax growth that comes along as a result of a project. So Oakland County looks to the local unit of government to direct them. The resolution is fairly boilerplate with one exception that we added, they now therefore be resolved. So I read that one out just to highlight what our direction to Oakland County is on this proposed plan. That the brownfield plan must specify that the city will reimburse for a proportional share of expenses if the MEDC or MDEQ, or ME, MDEQ does not approve all or some of the expenses. There, we got a typo, I got to fix there. The reason for that is because this project is also proposing to capture local school taxes, which requires approval by the state. So after Oakland County approves the Pleasant Ridge and Ferndale portions of the brownfield plan, they go to the state to approve the local school tax capture. And school tax is probably about half of the total school cap, of the whole total tax increment financing capture that exists. And that can't... Well, can't. So, the reimbursement period in the brownfield plan not exceed 26 years or a maximum of $1,473,784 from local taxes in the city of Pleasant Ridge, whichever comes first. That the Oakland County Brownfield Development Authority revolving loan fund captured be limited to $50,000 per year for not more than two years, therefore having a maximum capture of 28 years in the plan. So the way the plan is structured is that based on the eligible expenses that the developer has identified that can be reimbursed, it'll take 26 years to reimburse them for those. And then brownfield authorities can capture money for up to five years after that to seed fund a revolving loan fund to, that they can then use to provide money upfront to future brownfield projects. We don't have a local authority. Oakland County likes to capture money. In this case, because Ferndale is building new apartments, they've got a lot bigger tax increment bump, so they capture more money in Ferndale. Ferndale's brownfield pays off after 23 years. So in order to keep this equal, so that Ferndale and Pleasant Ridge are each foregoing 28 years, Ferndale will reimburse for 23, Oakland County will capture five years. We reimburse in 26, so we said Oakland County, will you just take two years of capture for us so that it's 28 years and both of them? Oakland County agreed to that. And then Oakland County further agreed that they'd only capture $50,000 a year for that reimbursement at the end, which is less than what the incremental tax is supposed to be. So what'll happen is in year 27, Pleasant Ridge will start to capture again some of that incremental tax that's been created. And then after, in the beginning in year 29, that $50,000 will go and will start to capture all of that on out in perpetuity. And then finally, that a clawback or termination provision be included in the reimbursement agreement that Oakland County signs with the developer so that in the event of non-paying of property taxes by the owner, we can clawback or terminate the brownfield plan. And that is a standard provision in their reimbursement agreement, but we'll just put it in here to make sure that our wishes are known. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions anybody has on the brownfield plan, on the development, on the resolution, on the process in general. But I would rather respond to your questions than go through it all again.
I don't blame you. Are there any questions?
Mayor, I would just ask, I know this is a question that I approached in an email earlier, but for the record, the property did see a reduction at the tax tribunal level. I think there was an ask of a reduction in the assessment of the property, of the value of the property. What was that number? Or do you know approximately what the number was and before and what it was after?
Yeah, so the, on the Pleasant Ridge parcels, the taxable value used to be about 1.3 million and now it's about 650,000.
Okay.
And the tax tribunal process, it's a legal process. There's a lot of backing and study that goes into that to prove your case. So that was based on what various assessors, looking at the value of the property, determined that that was.
Okay.
You know, one of the things is through the property transfer, you discover some of the environmental issues that may not have been known in the past. And that encumbers the property and then impacts the value of the property. So, yeah, for that reason, it was, the Pleasant Ridge parcels were cut about in half in terms of taxable value.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Do I have a motion then?
Your Honor, I move that the resolution authorizing the Oakland County Brownfield Authority to undertake review of the Iron Ridge Development Project be approved.
Is there support?
Support.
Any other further discussion?
Yeah, I would just say, Mayor, I want to congratulate everyone involved in this project. I think it's a really exciting project. I know you've worked well with Jim and I appreciate that. My concern is that the, the size of the project, it's a very enormous project, so we're talking 24 to 30 million dollar private investment in a property that has gone years without investment. We've talked about the issues environmentally that make the property, you know, difficult to work with. So all respect for the work that's gone into this project. As far as the scope of the work, I think it's very exciting and I think it's something that really is going to benefit that corner of our city, a corner that many people don't even know is Pleasant Ridge. I think any investment over there beyond what we've lived with for years is going to really announce and improve that area. But for me personally, the idea that for up to 29 years that we're going to see no increased revenue on our end is a concern for me. A project of 24 to 30 million dollars and then we're a city of, you know, our budgets are minuscule, you know, compared up, it's like very small, very much smaller than that. So for me, I think the TIF recapture is definitely a mechanism that works in a lot of communities throughout the state, deals with a lot of environmentally suspect sites. But I feel for us, the city of Pleasant Ridge, it's too much of an ask, too much of an ask for me to be comfortable. And that, that's why I'll be voting in opposition to this. Again, I appreciate the effort and I appreciate the scope of the work. For me, it's just the timeline and the ask of a city of our size, to me, is just too uncomfortable to approve this evening, so...
Can I ask what, what it is that we're not, because we're not getting anything out of the property now.
We are getting revenue from the property now and any improvements to the property would generate increased revenues to the city. So to say that we're not going to see any increased revenue, I mean, a $30 million project, a $24 million project, if the scale of the project was less than that, you know, we would still see increments over 29 years in revenues coming into the city. We talked about the attractiveness of even making that possible. I mean, we've talked about a return for people who are putting real money into it and we talk about, is it worth your while, is it worth the investors' while? You know, these are margins that are thin and I understand that. You know, we talk about, you know, internal rates of return and what a certain percentage means to an investment group as opposed to another percentage. I get that. For me, I think it's just the uncomfortableness of, here's a project, it's coming from private investments, it's going to return private investments. For me, the city's component of it is just too much for me to be comfortable with, over the space of 29 years.
You're not comfortable having any, any review, further review of it, for Oakland County to do a review? We're not asking?
Uh, yeah.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not going to get up here and argue.
No, but if the process is to review it, of course, you know, I'm comfortable with everyone reviewing and I'm just saying from my perspective at this point, I'm not...
But that's what, that's what the resolution says, not whether the project goes forward or doesn't. So any other?
Yeah, my only comment would be just because it is such an enormous project, it has to be done in this sort of a way. You know, it couldn't be done a little bit at a time and that's how, you know, the investment will, you know, eventually, you know, for the future of Pleasant Ridge. I mean, it's the only way to really have that area improved. So I, that's why I support this project, because I see, you know, especially the enthusiasm for, yeah, for all of us too.
That's what I...
All right. With that in mind, can we have a vote? Do we have, we have a motion and we have a second, right?
Yes.
Oh, no, we don't have, do we have a motion?
Yes.
Yeah.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Kryziak?
No.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Motion carries. They didn't even ask you to speak.
Thank you.
It was tough watching myself on television. I have more opportunities.
We never, we never watch. Just don't watch.
Never watch. I don't watch.
We don't, we don't want to know, this is, this is... Thanks for coming and sitting through, but keep this thing moving ahead.
We're current.
Right? Okay. Next item, establishing public hearings on June 13th, 2017 at 7:30 to solicit public comments on the following, proposed fiscal year 2017, 2018 mileage rates and proposed fiscal year 2017, 2018 combined city budgets. Jim, did you have any comments?
Do I have comments? Slide or two? I've got a slide or two on that.
Oh, good, oh, good.
Can't skip this one. As you know, adopting our mileage rates in the city's budget each year is an important step. It's really the nuts and bolts and the baseline of what we do here. So I want to make sure everyone understands where we're going and that what our finances are looking like and what the course ahead is for us. Am I maybe turning off the lights for this one? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll talk about millage rates trends. We have pension funding. That's a big issue. It's been a looming issue for a long time, and it's starting to bite this year, and it's only going to get worse. Again, we're doing a three-year budget with adopting one year, and we have two years of projected budgets that we present for planning purposes. And then we'll also talk about utility rates. Process at this point, tonight, the ask is to set a public hearing for the budget, which will be held in June, at which time the budget will be up for consideration for adoption. The budget is available on the website right now for review on the homepage. Down in the boxes of information, you'll see the budget that's posted there. And then utility rates are also acted on in June. That's done by resolution and needs to become effective July 1, 2015. Well, apparently that's a two-year-old slide, July 1, 2017. First, talking about millage rates. Again, we, our millage rates are being rolled back, as we talked extensively last month about the mechanism to reduce the city's property taxes to ensure that the city doesn't collect any additional property tax above a growth of 0.9% for this year. And again, that has the effect of actually lowering the amount of taxes that residents who did not sell or buy a house here pay from year to year. The average savings for a resident will be $30 less to the city in property taxes this year compared to last year. And that's simply because the pop-ups for when somebody buys a new house and that taxable value pops up, that person pays a lot more in property taxes to the city. So to ensure that the city doesn't collect any more than 0.9% more property taxes, everybody else's tax rate goes down so that they pay less to smooth out over the whole. But again, you'll see that the city tax rate for 1718 will be 21.56, 5677. Two years ago, it was 22.5595. So you've seen about a one-mill reduction in the city's total millage rate over the last two years. And this is just in chart form. And you can see where the millages that we passed in 2014, the override for the private new operating revenue to the city provided about a net of about $100,000, because there were some offsetting cuts in the water and solid waste funds. And then the park improvement taxes. So that was the jump. And then you can see where we've been reduced in the past couple of years as that rate starts to decline. The millage rate, the city portion is only part of the story. So when a resident gets a tax bill, it's important to know that when you come and pay your taxes at the city, or you pay your escrow, and your mortgage company pays your taxes, only 47% of those taxes are actually going to the city of Pleasant Ridge. 30% of them go to the Farnell School District, 9% go to the county, 7% to the intermediate school district, and then you've got the community college, you've got SMART, the zoo, the DIA, county parks, and metro parks all take their cuts. So 53% of the taxes go to other entities, 47% go to us. Again, over time, looking at inflation-adjusted revenues, projected for 201718 is here. If you just take that line back, you can see that the recession bit pretty hard. We lost a lot of revenue. Those property tax millages that were approved by the voters in 2014 brought us back up to basically, on an inflation-adjusted basis, a little bit below really what the city was operating on from 1990 all the way to 2010. So we're still operating fairly lean versus the long-term pattern for what the city operated on, on an inflation-adjusted basis. And just on, on inflation-adjusted basis, you can see that that big blue baseline is the amount of city revenue that's provided by property taxes, and it's higher than it ever has been. State shared revenue, which used to be this second line, has declined. And so what happened is, as the state just balances their own budget on the backs of local governments, we have had to tax our residents at a higher rate to make up for the revenue that we no longer get from the state. And you see that trend here. The blue line is nominal. This is what the state actually sent in dollar amount to the city each year from 1985 to 2017. This is the inflation adjusted, because obviously in 1985, $300,000 went a lot farther. Then $300,000 goes, or actually, $250,000 where we're at today. So even if the state just said, you know what, we're going to give you the same money we did in 1985, I'd say, great, thank you. On an inflation adjusted, that's $600,000 of today's money is what $290,000 or $85,000 was in 1985. So if the state said, you know what, we're going to make right and give you what we did on an inflation-adjusted basis, I'd say, thank you. All of our problems literally are solved, and we'll be able to give the residents a big tax cut, but don't hold your breath.
Ain't gonna happen.
Over time, you can see the property value trend. We've talked about assessed value and taxable value and how those are different on your property. And over time, assessed value can grow at whatever the market rate for your home is. So when you see your neighbor's house sell for 400 or $425,000 and you go, wow, that is reflected in this line. And then when your taxable value on your property, because you bought your property 10, 15, 20 years ago for $200,000, and the taxable value has grown at the rate of inflation, that's the gap. So this is assessed value, and this is what the city actually taxes on. And you can see the impacts of the recession here. Really topped out 2007, we kind of muddled along, and then the decline. It doesn't look like a lot, but you saw in the revenue pictures what that meant with this decline in property values. And actually, Pleasant Ridge, you can see now that our assessed value is higher, and our taxable value is actually slightly higher than it was at the peak. We're one of the only communities around that this is the case. Most communities are still below their peaks, so we're more fortunate than most communities seem, but we still have our issues. Let's talk about, okay. Key points, this year, we have a general fund revenue increase of $27,771, and that's all sources, shared revenue, property taxes, fees, permits, everything. Expenditure has increased by $32,000. But our pension costs are increasing by $57,000 in the coming year. So all other costs, we've had to, over the course of the last few years, we've actually had to cut costs. So our other costs, our other expenditures have decreased by $25,500. We're already having to make cuts to balance the books from our pension cost increases. This year, we're projecting, we're budgeting for a general fund surplus of $12,000. This is a fairly, this is a razor-thin operating margin. You know, any kind of unexpected expenses that come up could easily blow us into deficit territory. And for comparison, in 201516, we had a fund balance build of $54,000. So it's, you know, pensions, they're really impacting us. The resulting fund balance percentage is 23.1%. By policy in the budget, we've established that we want to have a 25 to 30% general fund fund balance percentage. A few years ago, it was about 16.5%. And so we built it up to 23%, but the rate at which we are rebuilding our fund balance, which we spent down during the recession, is slowing because of these cost increases that we're seeing. So pensions, let's talk about pensions for a second. This is a graph that shows a couple of things. The orange line is the percent funded of the city's entire pension picture. So that's all of our groups, administrative groups, former DPW employees, former city managers, and police. The blue line is the police group percentage funded. And you can see it tracks closely with the percentage, the total percentage. And the reason for that is that our police group is about 2/3 of our total pension fund. This gray graph, which is on the other scale, shows what the percentage of general fund expenses are yearly pension costs are. So in 1988, it was about 2%. Again, we're on this right-hand graph. All the way up until about 2001, we stayed right there around 2% of general fund expenses. And then we started to decline. This year, pension costs are about 8% of the city's general fund. And you can see, we know what our coming costs are going to be, because MERS tells us now. Couple of years from now, we'll be at about 13, 13.5% of our general fund expenditures will be going towards pensions. So, you know, that's one, close to 1/8 of our total general fund expenditures to pension costs. So that shows kind of the increase and the decrease in our fund, our percent funded. We're down to about 50% funded for all of our pensions, whereas back in 2000, we're close to 100% funded. So this is the actual annual pension fund expenses. So 2017, we're at about $290,000. Couple of years from now, we'll be at $375,000. And this is based on MERS's annual actual valuation, which was provided to us in June of each year. So this is last year's valuation. We'll get a new one coming up, at which point we can update this graph. But, you know, we're going to be up at the $340,000 to $370,000 pension funding range here in a couple of years. And why, you know, why is this, why is this happening? Well, there's a couple of reasons for that. In the past, MERS did not provide you with five-year projections. And in the past, MERS didn't require you to catch up. So as we'll talk about in a second, there were some decisions that were made in the past in terms of benefits that were provided to employees that weren't paid for at the time. And when those changes were made, MERS didn't change the city's funding requirement adequately at that time. So what happened is, over time, as those increased benefits were given, but contributions were not correspondingly increased, you just started to draw down the balance. And so a few years ago, and actually 2014, when we went for the millage request, it was after that millage request, the next year in 2015, was the first time MERS started to provide five-year projections. So even when we were going for the millages in 2014, we didn't know what was really coming down the pike at us. In 2014, MERS also changed their actuarial assumptions. So they went from assuming that the market and the pension fund was going to return 8%, they lowered that to 7.75%. Doesn't sound like a lot. But at the same time, they also increased their life expectancy. So now they're assuming that people are going to live longer and draw from the pension fund longer with a lower return. So that does two things, requires cities to put in more money now. Then, MERS also said, and if you have an unfunded pension fund, you're less than 100% funded, we're going to amortize that, and you have to catch up over a course of 20, 25 years, or 20 years, or 10 years, depending on if that, if that particular group is closed, if it's closed and new hires, so there's a few different things. So now they're amortizing us to make us catch up. So why did this huge spike occur, really starting here? You can see the acceleration. That's why. When MERS started to implement these changes to make you catch up. So what we're really seeing now is the chickens coming home to roost from a lot of decisions that were made in the past and some changes that MERS has made. And, you know, probably MERS is making these changes rightly, but it's putting a lot, it's putting, well, if you're less than 70% funded, and that's a lot of communities in this state, it's putting you in a box. And it's a challenge that a lot of people are going to start to deal with. So when you look at benefit costs compared to inflation, right, using 2006 as a baseline, and this is just how much each one of these things has increased percentage-wise since 2006, and this is just really for context more than anything. The big blue line here is pension costs, 160% increase, more than doubled. The green line is the total benefit cost for active and retired employees. This yellow line is healthcare. Healthcare is another one that's often cited as a skyrocketing, spiraling, out-of-control cost, but compared to pensions, it looks just downright quaint. So you can see that hasn't really changed much. I mean, it's outpaced inflation, but not by a great deal. And then you've got the cluster down here. The line on the very bottom is general fund revenue. So all of these expenses have increased, general fund revenue has not. The sort of orange line is inflation, and then this other blue line is police wages. So you can see the police wages have tracked with inflation pretty well over that time period. So benefits are joining us up. So we talked about some of those past decisions, and this is an example of two, of, these are our two largest pension groups. And so what, you know, what happened in the past? Well, starting in 1946, the city required employees to make a 5% contribution towards a pension fund, and both non-union employees and police got a defined benefit pension with a 1.7% multiplier. For those of you who aren't familiar with defined benefit pensions, and I wasn't really until I started here and had to learn about it, but a 1.7 multiplier is a part of the formula for how much money you get every year when you retire. And that's a factor of three things, the years of service, your final average compensation, and your multiplier. And it's a multiplication problem. You take a number of years of service, 20, you multiply that by the average compensation for your last three or five years, depending on how the fund is set up. So say that's $50,000. You take 20 times 50,000, and then you multiply that by this percentage, 1.7, 2.0, 2.25. And that gives you your annual benefit payment in retirement. So the difference between a 1.7 and a 2.5% multiplier doesn't sound like a lot, but if you put it in a percentage terms, going from 1.7 to 2.5% is a...
40-something percent.
50% increase, but?
Close to 50.
Close to 50% increase in what the city would provide to employees. That's a big deal. So in 1946, 5%, 1.7. Starting in 1982, there was a 0% contribution for police, same multiplier. So then the city just basically started picking up all of the contribution to the pension. 1989, the multiplier was increased. 1992, it was increased again. 1998, increased again. So this was the high watermark. Now, what happens when you provide a higher benefit? So if you had somebody in 1989, if you have a police officer who had worked at the city for 24 years, paying into a fund that had been set up to provide them a 1.7% benefit, and then they retire, a year after that benefit is increased to 2%, the fund has $100,000, which is enough to pay that 1.7 benefit. But now, in order to pay that, that person through retirement at a 2% benefit, you need $200,000. You can see where this is going. And then that just compounded over and over again as these benefits were increased and not paid for through increased contributions at the time. 2011, the police group was closed to new hires, and all employees went to a 2.5% contribution. And you see the same basic pattern on the administrative side, where it doesn't exactly track, but it ended up at the same place, three years after the police got a 0%, 2.5 multiplier, administrative employees got that in 2001. And that was the end, the end of the benefit increase process. Then again, 2011, the non-union group closed to new hires, and a new, a new plan was created for anyone hired after 2011. Putting that on a timeline, again, you've got your pension funding levels here, and this is going back to 1987. So you can see, we were over 100% funded, then we dipped, and then we went back up to 100% funded, and then there's just been a long, slow, steady slide. What this is showing, for context, because a lot of, you know, what the pension fund is funded at is dependent on market return. Because you assume when you invest, you put money in the pension fund, it's going to be invested and earn a return, and that is a big part of how you build up that balance. So this is your S&amp;P 500 annual return for each year over the last 30 years. So, you know, 0, 20, 0, 20, you know, it bounces all over the place. This is the '90s boom market, '95 through 2000. Everyone was happy, everyone was getting rich. We had five straight years of the market returning more than 20%. Good times, but then that was followed by not great times.
2000, that's the average.
So again, those same events we talked about. This goes to 1987, this is 1982, back here somewhere in the axis, but police employee contribution reduced from 5 to 0%. That wasn't a benefit increase. That didn't really change a ton in the long-term picture for the pension fund. It just meant the city was going to pick up an annual funding requirement. The benefit multiplier increased from 1.7 to 2. Admin employee contribution reduced. Police benefit multiplier increased from 2 to 2.25. All of a sudden, this decline gets steeper. But then, you know, these increased benefits that were provided were masked for a time being by this great market. And the pension fund built back up to 100%, even though, you know, it was, these increased benefit costs were taking effect. The lesson here is that if we just had 20% returns on the stock market every year, again, profit's all. But that's not realistic. So during that time period, the benefit multiplier increased from 2.25 to 2.5, and then the tech bubble pops, party's over. At this point, as the funding level, and it dropped pretty precipitously, in the course of two years, it went from 100% to a little over 80%. But the admin benefit multiplier still increased from 1.7 to 2.5 in 2001. And then you see the cumulative impact as the pension fund was drained down to 50% today. Some actions started to be taken as we got close to 60% funded and as the city was stressed during the recession. But the police and admin groups were closed to new hires, employee contribution increased to 2.5% for police and 3% for admin employees. This shows you, you can't read this, but...
Trust me, trust me.
But it's numbers. A lot of them were big, a lot of them were bad. This is the police group. There's a total unfunded liability of 1.6 million in the police group. The next largest group... The next largest group is our non-union administrative employees. That's $600,000 unfunded. And then you've got a couple of other groups. The city manager group is $200,000 unfunded. Our general other, this is our old DPW guys, so that was closed back in the '90s when DPW was outsourced. That's $315,000 unfunded. But police is over half of our unfunded liability. Budget impact, what's this mean to us today? So this is a lot of, again, a lot of numbers, but over the 2016 to 2020 period, total general fund revenue is anticipated to go up about 2.1%. General fund expenditures are projected to go up 5.1%. Why? Well, pension expenditures are increasing by 50%. Non-pension general fund expenditures are projected to increase by 0.7%. So in inflation-adjusted, in real terms, general fund expenditures not related to pensions are going down. We're making cuts to absorb some of these. But we can only cut so far before these, before there's real cuts that cut into the services that we provide today, to the staffing levels that we provide today. So, again, we're projected for a net revenue of $23,000 in the general fund this year. Next year, $12,000. The year after, we're projected to run a deficit, and then an even larger deficit of $46,000. And $46,000 deficit for a city may not sound like a lot, but for Pleasant Ridge, a $46,000 fund balance draw is close to 8% of our fund balance. And this only continues. So at this rate, you know, we've got a couple of years before our fund balance is depleted. So we are in a predicament. And again, actions today. We've talked about these closures from the hires, new groups. The police hired after 2011 have a 2.25 multiplier with an employee contribution of 2.5%. New administrative employees are back to the 1.7 multiplier with a 3% employee contribution. We'll talk a little bit later about a proposed hybrid plan for new police hires and a healthcare savings plan for all new hires to deal with some of those retirement healthcare costs that we also bear. We didn't really talk much about that because those aren't increasing at a huge rate, but we are paying $180,000 a year in retirement healthcare costs. And we have a $6 million OPEB, Other Post-Employment Benefits, unfunded liability. We're pay-as-you-go. Some communities have, over time, created an OPEB fund, trust, where they invest money into it like a pension. And then the returns from that pay their retirement healthcare costs. So there's really no actual impact on the general operating level. Nice if you got it, we don't. We started one a couple of years ago, and we're throwing a little bit of money in at a time as we can. But it's woefully inadequate to deal with our OPEB liability at this point. But again, those costs aren't increasing. That's not driving the predicament we're in today. So actually, utility rates is the next agenda item, I believe. Yes. So that is the introduction, sort of gloom and doom on this. We, really, the baseline takeaway here is we're at a point where we have to make choices. And we're going to have to make these choices as a community. We have these commitments that we've made to our employees. And it's not really a question of living up to the commitments we've made to our employees. We're going to honor these retirement commitments. The question is, how do we do that? And it's going to be either asking the people to approve a millage for a set amount of time to bring our pension funds up to a fully 100% funded state again, at which time then the pension will end. And it's really related to that amortization period that I talked about.
The millage will end, you mean?
The millage will end, right. So I think we can, over the course of probably 10 or 15 years, more likely 15 years, we're going to ask for a millage. We could eliminate this by paying off, paying off our credit card bill, really. And then, you know, once that's done, the millage will end because we won't have those, as a city, we won't have those huge pension costs anymore. The alternative is that services or personnel get cut. And we'll talk more about kind of what that means, what these retirement benefit costs are in comparison to what the costs of running our police department are. It's, you know, it's not going to be ugly. It's a tough decision that we're going to have to make. And so I think we'll be talking a lot more about that this summer. But, you know, spoiler alert. Get ready. We're going to have this conversation all over again that we did a couple of years ago. So with that, the action before you is to basically schedule a public hearing for the budget. There's really nothing else tonight. But I just, you know, love talking about this.
Will we get to see it again? Or get to see the slideshow again?
You know, you gotta, they say you kind of keep repeating something until you are so sick of hearing it. And that's when, you know, most people start to get it. Yeah.
Well, at least have the star move. That's, that's...
Yeah.
Maybe I can make it like zoom in and out.
There you go. Is there a motion to set a public hearing?
May I move that a public hearing be established for Tuesday, June 13th, 2017, at 7:30 PM to solicit public comments on the proposed fiscal year 2017-2018 millage rates and the proposed fiscal year 2017-2018 combined city budgets?
Is there support?
Support.
Any further discussion, questions? May we have a vote, please?
Commissioner of Hearing?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Crisay?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Motion carries for one public hearing. Now let's move to preliminary utility rates.
This will be much, 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 much quicker. You don't even need to let talk for this one. The utility rates are to be adopted by resolution. At this point, they're in draft form because we don't have the final numbers in from our service providers. SACRA, from whom we buy water. Tringali, our garbage provider, we get that from SACRA. And we also have our stormwater and sewage treatment. Again, these are pretty close, but somewhat preliminary. And so the draft proposed rates, $31.15 per bill for the ready-to-serve charge, a combined water and sewer usage rate of $72.80, a garbage pickup fee of $21.10, and then an ERU stormwater fee of $272.34 per ERU. And that is prorated over six bills. So basically, the ERU is going up very little. What you pay this year is what you'll basically pay next year. Utility rate inputs. Our utility rates are driven primarily by our wholesale or supplier costs. And those cost increases are unfortunately not bound by the Headley Amendment or rates of inflation or anything. They can just go up wherever they go up, and then we have to pay it. So our water costs, our wholesale water cost is going up 4.7% this coming year. Our sewage treatment cost is going up 7.5% this year, which is quite a bit. And that's due, unfortunately, with this creation of the Great Lakes Water Authority and the city of Detroit. And they have an 8,000-page document that they paid somebody to do that nobody can understand. But it's taking some of the costs from Detroit and moving it to the suburbs, basically. So we get a 7.5% sewage treatment cost increase, primarily because of that. Stormwater treatment cost is only going up 0.6%, Joyce. Garbage pickup cost is going up 10.5%. But we actually get something for this. This is baking in the single-stream recycling. And as you recall, SACRA got a grant. We're all, this summer, or early in the fall, we don't know. We've never promised a date because we don't know. But that's still the target. You'll get one of the big 45, 55, 65, I don't know, it's big. Wield recycling carts, single-stream. Throw all your stuff in there, paper, cardboard, everything. And then the truck comes and takes it away. So this garbage pickup cost reflects the increased costs to SACRA. They have to build a facility to process single-stream. Because right now, the reason we have to separate is because these things go to separate places, and it has to be sorted. When you do single-stream, you're basically paying somebody else to do the sorting for you. So you can build a facility that's automated to do this. It costs a lot of money. And in the meantime, SACRA has to pay people to do what you and I and everyone else are doing right now, is put your cardboard in a bag and everything else and separate it out. So there is an increased cost in the short term. SACRA tells us that this will moderate and perhaps even go down once the facility is built. We'll see. But for now, garbage pickup cost is going up to reflect, just basically, again, passing through increased costs that we're getting from SACRA. And then we have some capital improvement projects in the water fund this year. Doing maintenance on our sewers. We're lining the sewers on West Cambridge, Oxford, Norwich, and Hanover. And that's a cost that's reflected in the water and sewer enterprise fund as a capital expenditure. It's about $225,000 that we're estimating. So that's a big percentage of the budget for the coming year for that fund. So, all that said, when you bake all those together, the average water user who uses 8.4 units of water per year, we'll see about a 3.94% increase in their utility bills. So it's certainly not the largest increase we've seen. It's pretty much in line with a lot of other communities that are going through. I wish it was a little bit less, but it's not make a huge outsized increase, given our supplier and wholesale cost increases. No action is required on this. We just wanted to introduce these tonight along with the budget. There'll be a resolution for you next month.
Thanks. Any questions for Jim? Good. All right. Let's move on. The next item. Thanks, Jim. Very helpful. Next item, letter of understanding between the city of Pleasant Ridge and the Michigan Fraternal Order of Police Labor Council.
Yes.
Kind of started things. Could you give us a good...
Absolutely. So we have been working with our police. We've been working with the union. As you know, Officer Fern has retired. And as you know, we have some retirement benefits that we've shown are at current levels unsustainable. We've started this process. I came in. I don't have a defined benefit. I have a 401K-style defined contribution retirement plan. And so does Tim, our DPW employee. So there's been some continuing changes to specific individuals in the city for retirement benefits. This is something we work with the police. As we look to replace, hopefully, Officer Fern, we can't bring somebody new in at the same benefit level without something happening with the city. So this proposal is for, it covers new police hires. It brings new police hires in line with, more in line with the benefit level provided to new administrative employees. Administrative employees have not gotten any retirement healthcare benefits since 2011. That was ending. Police still get that contract. So the proposed agreement, the police contract runs through June 30th, 2018, at which time we have to negotiate a new one. But knowing that Officer Fern is retiring now, we're going to bring in a new full-time officer. We need basically, we need a new benefits plan to bring them in at. And we negotiated that with the police recently. And we have a letter of understanding that would memorialize this between the city and the union. The union has agreed to these changes. And again, we've talked about this. So right now, what is it? You get the 2.2 or 2.5 multiplier DV if you're a police officer. Retirement healthcare, you get the same. If you retire at age 50, you get the same health care as an active employee until you turn 65, at which time the city provides a Medicare Advantage plan, which is a supplement to Medicare. What's being proposed is moving to a hybrid pension, which is a combination of a small defined benefit portion. We've talked about multipliers. The defined benefit multiplier here is 1.0. So it's about 30% of the defined benefit of a 2.25 pension. And then there's also a 401K-style defined contribution. The employer contribution is capped at 9% for each employee. I'm going to give you, you know, some context. We contribute about 9% to the 2.25 multiplier employees right now. So this is the same contribution. It's just how you slice up the risk is one of the big differences with the hybrid plan. There'd be a 5% employee contribution. And again, the expected benefit value is equivalent to the plan for officers hired after 2011, but it's the risk sharing. Right now, the city bears all of the risk. So if the fund becomes unfunded, we have to make all of that up in the future. In this case, it's risk sharing. So the hybrid plan says, "We're going to provide you with a baseline defined benefit pension that you can absolutely count on." And then the rest is the employee's 401K-style plan. So, you know, market return, all of those varying factors, future decisions by the city that impact, what we can fund pensions at, come into play. And this mitigates risk, a little bit on both sides, actually. Because the defined contribution side of the plan provides that employee with certainty that that's their money that bad decisions by the city can't impact in the future. So when I say risk sharing, it's a street that goes both ways to some extent. And then a healthcare savings plan in lieu of employer-provided retiree healthcare. This will be a 3% employer contribution each year, and then a 1% employee contribution into a defined contribution-style plan. At the end, the employee will have a nest egg that they can use to buy retirement healthcare, to buy supplements, to provide supplemental insurance, Medicare, you know, you name it. So, you know, it may be that the employee can't retire at age 50 So, you know, it may be that the employee can't retire at age 50 and have healthcare until 65 unless they go get another job somewhere or, you know, do something to make up that cost. But that's their choice. So, let's compare this. What does this, so what's this actually mean for the employee? What's it mean for the city? Scenario analysis, just a basic scenario analysis. We have assumptions. And the only one that changes in this assumption is the market rate of return at 5% to 8%. In all other cases, there's a constant assumption of 2% inflation, a constant assumption of 5% employee contribution, and that we'll hire an employee at age 25, they'll be here for 26 years, and they'll retire at age 51, and either go to their cottage or get another job, whatever they decide to do. So, you've got the three scenarios. We've got four different example plans. The 2.5 multiplier plan, that was for employees before 2011. The 2.25 multiplier plan, that's been for employees since 2011. Our hybrid plan. And then, the 1.7 multiplier that you would have gotten if you were a police officer hired in 1980, or if you're an administrative employee hired now. And so, the market rate of return at 8%, 6.5%, and 5%. And for context, this is dividend reinvested annualized rate of return over the past one year for the S&amp;P 500, 15%. The 10 years is 6.9%. 20 years is 7.3%. And 30 years is 9.7%. So, that provides a wraparound context for these scenarios. If you're here for 25 years, you know, it's right within this range for where the market might end up. So, the 2.5, the 2.25, 1.7 multiplier benefit, those are set. That's a, you get a flat benefit level. It's up to the city to do that. So, it shows you what that employee would get. $42,000 a year at the 2.5, about $38,000 a year at the 2.25, and then, $28,700 at the 1.7 multiplier in all three scenarios. What changes is the hybrid plan because of the defined contribution that the employee can get. And again, withdrawal, the other assumption I didn't describe on the previous one was that you assume that per kind of financial planning, basic, you know, guidelines that the employee would withdraw 4% of their defined contribution nest egg every year to fund their retirement. So, it's market return. If you get an 8% market, the hybrid plan actually returns more than the 2.5 multiplier. If you have a sort of a bad market, the hybrid plan returns a little bit more than the 1.7 multiplier annual benefit. So, you talk about this hybrid plan being a benefit cut, maybe. Could be a benefit increase. It's right in the range of that 1.7 to 2.5 defined benefit multiplier. So, you know, if you say that the officer who retired here in 1980 and lived in their retirement on a 1.7 multiplier benefit, or the officer who retired, you know, Officer Fern who retires with a 2.5 multiplier benefit, not to pick on Officer Fern. He took the deal that was given him, so I don't blame him at all. Future employees can expect to have a benefit in retirement that falls somewhere in between those two officers. So, I feel that this is still a good benefit, that it's still a competitive market rate benefit that is going to allow us to attract good talent to the city. And looking at what all the other communities have done, we've benchmarked this extensively. You've got hybrid plans. You've got defined benefit plans that some cities are still offering at 2.25% that the employee is contributing 8% of their salary to fund. And you've got cities that are all defined contribution, that range from an employer contribution of 9% to 12%, and an employee contribution of probably about 5% on average. And the healthcare, retirement healthcare savings fund is something that most communities have moved to now for their new hires and their contracts. So, we're still market rate, fully cognizant that we have to attract good talent and we want to. So, this is a way of balancing and mitigating the potential for us finding ourselves in a situation where we're 50% funded in the future and that our pension contributions more than double or triple each year. So, really mitigating that long-term risk is what the purpose of this is doing. And again, to put context, retire, just for police, just for the police contribution in the coming year, we pay our full-time officers about $300,000 a year in salary. And we pay our retired, we pay our pension fund just for police, $150,000 for retirement healthcare, and something like $140,000 for pension. So, our retirement benefit costs are equal to the total cost of salary for our existing officers, to give you some extent of the scale of the issue we're dealing with. So, I think I've said enough on that. With that, I turn it over to you. The action before you is a request to approve the letter of understanding between the City of Pleasant Ridge and the Michigan Fraternal Order of Police Labor Council, who is our patrol officers' union. And at which time, if this is approved, the officers will then vote on it as well. And it'll go to effect July 1, 2017.
Yeah. Before I ask for a motion, are there any specific questions? Jim.
Jim, just to reiterate, you said this was already kind of agreed upon by the police officers' union?
Yep. We had a number of meetings. And we came to this agreement. We put together a letter of understanding. We sent that to the union for their review. And I was told by the union representative and Glenn, who's the president of the officers' union, that they were good with it. So, we can proceed.
That was on May 2nd.
Pardon?
That was on May 2nd.
I'm not sure what the exact date that I have to read back was, but it was around then.
Okay.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Your honor, I move that the letter of understanding between the City of Pleasant Ridge and the Michigan Fraternal Order of Police Labor Council be approved and that the mayor and city manager be authorized to sign the letter of understanding.
Do I have support?
Support.
Please.
Open for discussion.
Mayor?
Yes. Thank you. If I could, just want to acknowledge all the work that's been put on this. I know these are meetings that we started many, many months ago discussing this particular issue. So, I know there's been a lot of thought by the commission and the staff, a lot of work by the police officers' union in coming to this agreement. I think from the onset, I made clear to staff and my colleagues how uncomfortable I was going down this route. I understand, and we've gone over those numbers, and I appreciate the picture, the very real picture it paints as far as the cost of providing these benefits to our police officers. It's not a cost that we can just wish away. I think we all know that it takes, it is taking right now difficult questions, and it will take difficult questions in the future. But again, my preference has been all along that we could avoid eliminating this benefit, which I do see as still the best way for guarantee a secure retirement for our police officers. I just want to, I took some time to write something. Basically summarizes my beliefs on this, is that the security of a defined benefit pension and health insurance coverage in retirement is a fundamental component of our commitment to the men and women who patrol our streets and protect us every day. What has been proposed, moving to a hybrid-style 401(k) and health savings plan for our dedicated police officers, will shift this long-term risk from the city to these individuals. And Jim did a great job of explaining how that would happen. But the families of these officers live every day with the risk that comes with their loved ones simply leaving for work. So, yes, there's a financial risk, but there's the very real risk of being a police officer. And that is something that you can't, I mean, you can't reflect in a spreadsheet. And I think we all know that, you know, the men and women who are out there patrolling the streets are doing so at their and their family's risks. I think that's a point that everyone acknowledges. But my belief is that we should not then also ask them to assume the risk of financial markets and an unpredictable healthcare system after they have spent a career ensuring all of our well-being together. And this is a key point for me and something that I've just been stuck on when we talk about risk sharing. We, and when I say "we," and this is like big community thinking "we," so 1,115 households. For me, we collectively, we bring our police officers in this community. I think that's honest. I think we're all genuine in considering our police officers part of this community. I think basically, it comes down to my belief that the 1,115 households of Pleasant Ridge can help shoulder these risks in a way that the family of one police officer simply cannot. So, I continue to believe that the best way to protect our officers in retirement after they have spent years protecting us is to continue to fund the security of a defined benefit pension and healthcare. To me, that is a fair exchange. It's a difficult exchange on our part to realize, but I believe it is worth the effort. I know there are politicians at all levels trying to push these cuts on public employees statewide. My belief is that Pleasant Ridge can commit, and my hope is that we can commit to the retirement security of all our Pleasant Ridge police officers regardless of their hiring date. I do believe we have the financial resources in Pleasant Ridge. We've talked about, you know, the challenges we face, but we also acknowledge that, you know, we've been blessed in ways that other communities, very close proximity to ours, have not been. So, the funding of an independent police department and also providing the men and women who staff that department with a secure retirement, I do believe puts us within reach of that goal because of our ability to withstand and to navigate our way through the financial crisis. But to achieve that goal, I understand it is asking tough questions of all of us, all parties. And by all parties, I mean all parties. So, the police officers, city leaders, the city staff. But I also think, and Jim indicated, you know, this is going to take serious consideration from all of us as homeowners and taxpayers in the city of Pleasant Ridge. So, to fund both an independent police force, which we all acknowledge that we value deeply, and to fund a secure retirement for our police officers is going to require hard questions. And part of that calculation, to me, falls on revenue. And I know we don't like to talk about taxes. And believe me, I'm a homeowner in this community. I don't like to talk about taxes either. But in my mind, taxes are how we, as a community, help our police officers shoulder the burden in retirement and make sure that after they've spent a year, years protecting us, that we repay that with a secure retirement. So, again, I want to acknowledge the work that has gone into preparing this document tonight on both the union's side and the staff's side. But as it has been my opinion since the beginning, I just cannot support a change to these, this benefit level. Because I do believe that we have the wherewithal, we'll take some difficult questions, but we can continue to offer a defined benefit pension and guaranteed healthcare in retirement. So, I don't want to take up too much of your time, but I did want to take the time to explain why I'll be voting in opposition of this tonight.
Thank you. Are there any other comments?
Sir Mayor, just a quick one. Commissioner Krzyszak, I totally get the spirit of what you're saying. I think it really comes from the right place, comes from the heart, and it comes from, you know, the desire to do the right thing for our police force, which we all value so highly. What I wanted to ask you, though, is you mentioned making some tough decisions and asking yourself tough questions. What does that really translate to? You know, if we say we're looking at, to cover the pension costs, a likely millage ask of some sort, are you saying the tough question is, "How much more does the millage have to be than what it would be without that change?" Or should I say, "With the change"?
Well, the way we've discussed it, and Jim, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but any kind of ask currently being considered would just be to fund the unfunded portion of our liabilities currently. The ask would not include a component that would cover this future employee, these future employees. So, the ask of any kind of tax increase would be strictly to meet our commitments that we've already made, not to fund commitments that we are or are not going to make in the future.
Correct. The, there's two layers to this. The baseline layer is the unfunded liability, which we have to amortize, we have to eliminate. So, that's, that's, so the millage request we have to make has to generate enough money to cover this. And then, at the end of probably 15 years, this has been eliminated, the millage ends, goes away, you know, we're done because we've got a sustainable new plan that we've been funding. And at that point, those pension costs die off, the revenue dies off, and, you know, we're fine.
That's the option you already described.
That's the option you already described. That's the baseline layer, which really, what must be done. So, this is the predicament. This is the option. So, the layer on top of that is, you know, if we want to continue to provide these benefits, in the past, we haven't paid for the full cost of these benefits as we go. So, if we wanted to keep these, to have any kind of realistic chance of sustainably funding these into the future, we would have to bear increased pension costs at the city, and we'd have to, we would have to start to get ahead of our retirement healthcare issue and start funding, seriously funding, our OPEB trust so that when an officer retires, that money is there to pay for that retirement healthcare. So, that's a big part of this additional cost that we start to have to sock away. This may not end. So, this might just be an additional, you know, supplemental millage that has no ending date, that goes on and on. So, for a time being, you know, it might take us from this level of millage ask to this level of millage ask, and then on into the future, this millage ends, and then this one comes, and the, you know, the perpetual cost increase. Now, I haven't studied this, so I'm not, I'm not prepared to offer any estimate on what that number might be. I'd give you an estimate of what this number is. I've studied it. Don't know what this is. So, you know, if there's interest, we can look into that and try to, you know, figure out what that needs to be. But again, I'm, you know, awaiting direction. The benefit changes before you eliminate the need to do this.
And that was going to be the second part of my question. So, the hybrid plan, if we did go to that, we'd still have to look at this big section or this big unfunded liability that we've already talked about tonight. But this new part on top, that's not really a concern anymore because we've adjusted enough to where that's not a problem.
Right. It's only a problem if we keep the benefits as they exist today.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes. Mayor?
Yes.
Likewise, I share the concerns and the sentiments that you've expressed. I'll be voting to support the decision that their labor council made. So, if they have already seen the agreement and have spoken in favor of the agreement that was presented to them, then that's how I'll be voting. I'll also suggest that, as we look at across society, every segment of society has this question, the same issue. Some have faced it earlier than others. Certainly in the automotive industry, we saw benefits contract even as early as 2000, the first bubble bursting with the tech, bubble bursting, excuse me, for repeating myself today. And then, again, in 2008, when the, during the economic downturn, and there were some estimates that say two of the three car companies went bankrupt because they had not taken care of this issue when they saw the average age of their retirees going above a certain amount. So, it was evident that these pension plans, which are highly desirable features of employment, were just not being funded properly by many sectors of society. So, we're reaching that point now, and our city and many cities are facing this. And so, I'm definitely in favor of dealing with the issue as a potentially serious economic problem for the city, understanding that our police are very treasured here. And, yeah, that's it.
Anything else? All right. I think it's time for a vote. Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Krzyszak?
No.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Motion carries. Good discussion. I hope you don't have much to say. City managers report. I can't imagine.
I have 47 power points. The only thing I want to update you on is the parks, specifically Gainesboro Park.
Yes.
And the fact that it's a wonderful park that's maybe 90% finished. We had a meeting with the contractor for our punch list walkthrough last Friday. They're supposed to be fulfilling and taking care of all the remaining punch list items by May 26th. However, that would be the first time they kept a deadline. You don't hold your breath. But we are working towards this, to some solutions for some of the, you know, some of the things that aren't done out there. We know the grass that was hydroseeded is patchy. We know that that needs to be supplemented in a lot of places, and they will be overseeding. And we will be working to get fuller grass growing out there. The tennis courts, that's not actually this contractor's responsibility. We arranged for that separately. That's a function of the weather. So, the garden coatings, the contractor will be out to finish that when we have temperatures that are consistently above 70 degrees during the day and 55 degrees at night.
Wouldn't that be nice?
So...
Any day.
Any day. So, then we'll have a nice new tennis court. We know that we have some water ponding issues. We're working on a couple of solutions. One of the folks that we are independently working with for a product that actually takes the water, uses capillary pressure and sort of takes the water and sucks it down into the water table. They work under a DEQ permit because the DEQ doesn't, you know, you put water into the water table, it can do things. So, since we have the old DPW yard and we have the old Reichhold properties on the other side of the train tracks, those fall within a range that the DEQ is still determining whether or not we can use that product there. If we can't, then we have some backup alternatives. But we're basically just waiting for the DEQ on permitting. We know that we have a drainage, I don't know if it's a problem, but it's a slow drainage up at Kensington, at the parking lot. You know, the water doesn't go in the ground too quickly there. Tends to get off the parking spaces, you know, in a reasonable amount of time, but before it all goes away. So, we know these are issues. We're working on a couple of options to see how we can maybe improve those. I don't know what else. You've maybe seen some new concrete pads pop up. We're adding some benches by the playgrounds so the parents have something to sit, should they so choose. We're adding some trash cans.
A square.
Yep. The squares are for trash cans. The rectangles are for benches. We're actually putting a bench that, one of them was mispoured by the DPW building. One of the things we've continued to have is cars that ignore the no-turn sign and turn onto the pathway and then drive around the baller that's in the middle of the road trying to get out somewhere. So, we're actually adding the other bench there, just as kind of a, hey, guess what?
One more.
It's real.
For real.
We mean it.
Yeah. So, that's why that bench is going in there. So, we'll have new benches and trash cans going in soon in the park. And I don't know if there's other, Scott, are there any other major issues that I've missed?
I don't think so.
Jim? Three days after our last rain, the swale at the end of my street was, water was that deep, right up to the street. Three days it took to get out.
That's another issue. There, the issue is that there's inlet. There's inlet filters in those drains. So, those actually drain to a drain, but there's basically a stopper in there now that...
Well, that stopper stopped.
You're right. That's something that's coming out soon. So, because construction is done, we don't have the silt that's going into the sewers. So, they're going to pull that...
That was a temporary thing. I understand that.
Yes. So, those will flow much better because that's a drain right into sewer.
Okay.
Yep. So, those are coming out as well.
I understand that some of the kids have instituted vote races by the teeter totter. So, that's, you know, I don't know if that was meant, but I think...
Hey, we could move the teeter totter and make that water feature, but I'm not... Yeah, you live at the park and you find out what it tells you after a while.
It's, but, you know, just watching the people, I mean, and getting the comments about people that have discovered the path or using the path every day, I mean, it's just, it's wonderful. I can't wait to see people sitting at the...
Can I make a comment about that? I've been there about 51 years. I have never seen so many people walking, strolling, walking dogs, bikes, little kids on scooters, kicking on trams or whatever they call them. It's really working. It's amazing. I love it.
A couple of other things that occurred to me. Dog park. We're working on getting another power drop so that the Kensington entrance will be open with a card. You know, we had some issues where people who didn't have passes were getting in the park. You have to have a rabies certificate and other things to ensure that, you know, your dog is okay to be in the park. So, we're getting some issues there, so we had to lock that one. That'll be opening up. Community garden is working. So, we'll have the community garden space looking spruced up and nice soon. And there's one other thing that...
Is the water on? People in the dog park?
I don't know. We'll check on that.
I know that several people...
Are we opening up?
It'll be out on Thursday. We have some other work to do in the city on replacing the height from the Norwich. They were going to hit some of those spots that they have to do.
I knew that that was just one of the issues.
Yep.
The picnic tables that are sort of over by the Wellsley entrance are going to be moved. Those are going to get out of there. So, that'll get cleaned up. The misting station, where those pipes are kind of sticking out of the ground by the turtle in the playground, that'll be going in soon. I don't, we don't have an update on that. The baseball diamond is still going to be resurfaced. We've had some issues with that contractor, too. But it's on the radar.[1782.13] But it's on the radar, we're going to get it done. And then, the, the other part is the hill by the bridge, where the grass totally failed to take. So, yeah, it's never going to grow there. We're actually going to put in the artificial turf.
Oh, good.
Because that slope will never hold. So, we're going to do the same kind of artificial turf that was put in over by the pool. So, be on the lookout for that, so that, you know, we'll at least have some, something that's green and not dirt and mud.
One other question, I know you and I played around with it one day, is that circular thing that doesn't go?
Yeah, it was kind of a disappointment, wasn't it?
It's a real disappointment.
So, the marketing materials showed this thing like spinning around where I wanted to climb on it, and then, you know, it's got a, it's got a hydraulic brake on the thing that you can't...
You cannot. It isn't.
There's no adjustment of it?
Yeah.
They don't want you pushing it.
It's actually part of the, it's part of the internal workings of this, the spin, the spin mechanism for...
There aren't too many 40-year-olds looking on it that...
You can actually hear it when you start to get to a certain speed, you can hear the hydraulics like push up against it, and it's, if you try to bypass it, it stops it from spinning.
I just try to get kids to push me around, and it just...
Yeah, actually, I had somebody, I had somebody that was looking to put one in, in northern Ohio, and we were the only ones in the area that had one, and she was going to come by and look at it and wonder what I thought, and I was like, the piece is great, like, it looks great, it's all this cycle, but it just doesn't spin as fast as the video shows. And she goes, oh, yeah, because that's what we were looking at the video shows, and I said, yeah, come and, you know, come and look at it, it's a, you know, it's a great piece, and kids, I think kids, kids love it, it's just like when adults get on and try and spin it, it's like, oh, man.
Hell, no!
But, I, I see kids on it all the time.
It's good for climbing.
Yeah, there's no defeating the, the speed limiter on that one, for sure.
It does, you know, it's got the second level, it's like a clubhouse hangout there.
Yeah, definitely.
You know, it's certainly a good piece to have, but part of the, part of the risk of being an early adopter, I guess.
It's visually very cool.
Yes, it's all right.
It is. We can live with it. It makes me nauseous, just like... Disappointed, but we can live.
Jim, if I could ask a question regarding the reconstruction of Norwich and Hanover? Do we know when it's expected to open back up and Hanover to be broken up?
Sure. Norwich actually was opened up over the weekend, cars were able to park on the street. There are still pouring sidewalks and driveways on Norwich, it's just the weather's been...
Wet.
Not, yeah, not cooperative with that. So, they're going to be finishing up sidewalks and driveways on Norwich this week, and we'll have it open again for traffic, limited traffic, you know, where we'll be able to park on the street, hopefully by Thursday or Friday, and then it will stay, will stay open for people to be able to park on the street while they're doing, they're going to come in and do the backfill and get, get everything ready for landscaping. As soon as they're, they're done with that, they're going to hop over to Hanover, because they have some underground work to do, a little bit more underground work on Hanover to do in Norwich, so they're going to start doing that underground work, and people will be able to still traverse down the street and get to their homes. But they're, they're looking, everything going perfect, that they'll probably start that underground work on Hanover on Monday. So, people won't be, you know, displaced from their homes right away on Hanover, but we will, we will let everybody know, hand out a notice to everybody on Hanover, and everybody on Norwich will get the same notice, so they know what's going on. One thing, in Norwich, on Thursday, water will be shut off to the street from about 9:30 to 2 o'clock to replace some hydrants. One of the hydrants had to be moved, it was about six inches from where driveway was, so we had to move that and put a new hydrant on there. So, everyone will get a notice at their door tomorrow. So, people in the surrounding area may experience some, some brown, discolored water, because they have to shut the water off, you know, run the, run the water for about 10 minutes in your house, and it should clear up.
So, you think by then, New York, Norwich will be open for traffic?
Yep, yep. Norwich should be opened for at least street parking, traffic.
Oh, necessarily drive-through?
Driveways won't be open yet, because they're just, they actually haven't even poured any of the driveway openers yet, they're getting the slopes and all of that worked on today, so they were pouring all the side openers. Did they pour some at the end?
West End.
Okay. So, yeah, they were, they were working on getting some of those done, so people will know, when the barricades removed, they'll be able to park in the driveway, so.
But as far as traffic that goes through the street, you know, say from Oakdale, like I love to do?
Uh, through Oakdale, that, the one end is, we're waiting on the breaks from the, the previous concrete, that takes a little bit longer to cure, and to get the brakes back to where we're comfortable opening it, so I, I don't have a date on that. I think we're about seven days on that, I think they poured that last Tuesday. So, we're, I think about 10 to 14 days on previous concrete curing, just to be sure, because it's such a weird, I still can't get it, so, all right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Jim? Okay. Let's move on, other business. We've arrived at other business.
Excellent, Mayor.
Oh, oh, okay.
I know we all expect the book conversation. I'll mix it up a little bit. Our wonderful city clerk mentioned last month that qualifying petitions for mayor and city commissioner are now available, I'm sure she'll have another report on that a little bit later. These are basically the petitions where you gather a bunch of signatures from your fellow PR residents, you go around and, you know, get enough signatures, and eventually you'll be able to run for public office. As you probably know, the mayor's, Commissioner Scott's, and my seats will be up in November. I can tell you that for sure, one will be up, one will be open, and that'll be mine, because I won't be running for another term. I think it's always good for people to run if they feel compelled to, even if there are incumbents that they're going to be running against, sometimes especially if they're incumbents, depending on where you are and what the situation is. At this time, for sure, there'll be one seat up for grabs, maybe more, but I know one for sure. So, if you've ever thought of running, or if you ever wanted to take more of an active part in your government, and helping set the course for what happens in your city and where things go, our city that is, not just yours, I think now is a great time for it, and I would really, really encourage it, and encourage some really serious thought about that. Discuss it with your family, discuss it with your friends, discuss it with your family again and again, if necessary, because sometimes it takes a lot of discussion to come to that final resolution that you will do something like this. But really figure out if this is something that's important to you, something that you want to undertake, and if yes, go for it. And a lot of people say, well, I haven't lived here very long, or whatever, I mean, maybe you haven't lived here very long, maybe you've lived here decades, maybe you don't know many people, maybe you know lots of people, maybe you have not been on a junior commission, maybe you've been on lots of junior commissions in your time here. It really doesn't matter, I mean, really, in the end, it makes no difference. Basically, you're a registered voter here, you've lived here for at least a year by the time of your appointment, that's it. Check those two boxes, you're good to run, go for it. The rest is really up to you. Something you may not know are the perks of the job. There are perks. I mean, first off, these chairs are extremely helpful. I mean, you can adjust them, up and down, back support's really good.
That's why we have long meetings, we...
Yeah, you know? You really need that, you really do. Unlimited water supply here during the meetings, if you need, it's cool, refreshing water. You know, you have an extremely high potential to become a TV and YouTube sensation, really. Everyone in town will pretty much love you, right?
Oh, of course, yeah.
But on a more serious note, you will have a very capable city staff to support you along the way, and of course, you'll have the great honor of representing and serving your community, your neighbors, your friends, and helping to really lead the city into the future, wherever that may be and whatever may come there. And to me, that's really what it's all about. The last thing I would say about this, and this is the most important thing, I think, is, don't let the idea of it intimidate you. And it's not to pat anybody on the back like, oh, my God, what an achievement this is, but really, you think about it, it's easy to say, oh, God, I couldn't do that, because there's a lot of things involved, especially in the very beginning, that are outside of most people's comfort zone. But what I would say to that is, that doesn't matter, I mean, really, if you have the will to do it, you can do it. Democracy is made to be run by us, and you are part of us. So, if it's something you want to do, if it's something you think's important, and you have the commitment to do it, pull the trigger, make it happen. Get your petitions and get out there and get some signatures. I think we're each allowed, as a resident, to sign two of them, if I remember correctly, so I'm ready to sign anybody's petition. Two times, I can't exceed two. I want to sign two petitions, you know, I want to see involvement, that'd be great. Again, you might have questions. I have a lot of questions. If you have questions, it's kind of an easy one, there's, there's a lot of people that are available to you to give you answers to those questions, questions about what does it take to run, it seems pretty daunting, what does it take to actually do the job? You know, maybe it doesn't really seem that hard to do, but there are a lot of things to learn, and we have a lot of resources available, not just the people up here, that I know all of us will be willing to help answer any questions, but the city staff, I know firsthand, they were extremely helpful from beginning steps of this process all the way through now. They were very helpful to me, and I greatly appreciate that. So, the last thing I would say is, if this is something you feel committed to do, something that's important to you, don't wait for somebody else to do it, just do it. Pull the trigger, do it, jump in, go for it, and swing for the fences. It's really up to you to take that first step, to make that decision that's something you want to do, and the rest, it's going to work out, and it'll be worth it. So... Two petitions I will sign, please. Yep. I won't take any thunder with the due date of those petitions, I'll let her speak to that a little bit. I've said enough, but that's my pep talk, so thank you.
Thank you.
It's been a pleasure. And will continue to be a pleasure.
Yes.
Amy, do you want to use that as a...
So, you have, not many petitions are available for mayor and city commissioner. Two have been told, one for mayor, one for city commissioner, none have been returned. They are due to, say, July 25th, by 4:00. You need 25 minimum signatures, 50 maximum signatures. If there's any questions on the process, how to do it, what it takes, petition requirements, any of that stuff, give me a call or shoot me an email, and I'll go over them.
It's not a perk in the job, anyway.
His beer.
Jason, I didn't know. We were just told that was a case of beer, so...
No, I'm saying if you need 25 signatures, you can cover that by giving everybody a case of beer. As long as you don't take a magazine.
All righty then. Book club?
I mean, book club pales, I mean...
Yeah, we didn't expect that.
But, just briefly, this is tomorrow, actually. Last month, we talked about having in Gainesboro, we talked amongst the book club, and we thought we'd be pushing the 50-degree mark tomorrow, so we're moving tomorrow's book club discussion of the residents to the community center at 7:00 tomorrow. Again, this is a book, it's kind of a behind-the-scenes of the White House and all the people who make the White House function, very interesting behind-the-scenes perspective. And then, in June, I want to give everyone a heads up, and if you need a copy, I have one available, currently reading this one, but I have this one available, if you need it, please send me an email. This is Margaret Atwood's The Handmaid's Tale, is being, I guess, rejuvenated with some of the political goings-on in the world. It talks about a dysfunction, dystopian future that isn't too bleak, that the author cautions against. This is the type of book that really stimulates good conversation, and that will be, hopefully, our first book club outside. We'll schedule that one for Gainesboro Park on June 14th, Wednesday, June 14th, at 7:00 for Margaret Atwood's The Handmaid's Tale. So, hope you can join us for either of those dates.
I think they're running that on Hulu, right?
Yes, it's...
In the series, yeah. Oh, okay. So, if you don't want to read the book...
Yeah, there you go.
Subscribe to Hulu and...
Please, yes, Mayor, on that. If you just want to do the Hulu and comment, please, no, I...
I always recommend the book.
Yes, well, the book is a starting point for discussion, so, but thank you.
Anyone? I see, do we want to, I see you kept writing 50 Bingo.
Yeah, the 50 plus Bingo is Thursday, you said?
Right, right. 50 plus Bingo is on Thursday, is it 6:00?
June 11th.
May 11th.
May 11th.
May 11th. 6:00. Be there, it's a good time.
Great prizes.
Great prizes, great prizes. And the jackpot is up to...
Oh, we have like $600 in gift cards, I think, in it. Oh, my God. It's 50...
Be an excellent option.
50, 60, 57 numbers, I think, to get the overall...
Okay, okay. Very cool. It's a lot of fun, it's a lot of fun. All right, if there is nothing else...
Sorry, I have something else.